Good evening, everyone. Our, this is the Board of Selectmen's meeting for January 15th, 2019, for the town of Yarmouth. We're returning from executive session, and now we're going to open the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we have a very nice event planned this evening. I'd like to recognize our chief, Frank Fredrickson, and ask him to carry on with the meeting at this point.
Good evening. It's been a while since we've been able to come here and introduce some of our new employees for obvious reasons, so it's a great pleasure tonight to be here. We're quite proud of the work that's been done by our staff. Mike Bryant doing a lot of the recruiting here, and we're going to present to you our newest staff. And I got to tell you, we've got more to go. You'll see some more in the future. What you don't see tonight are two dispatchers who couldn't make it tonight. One is Janie Sunby. She's a graduate of Norset High School. She served as a 911 police and fire dispatcher for the Barnstable County Sheriff's Office. She also served as a police and fire dispatcher for Fairfax County Department of Public Safety in Fairfax, Virginia. Very well qualified, doing a great job. We also hired Kelly Wa as a dispatcher, graduate of Barnstable High School and a graduate of Cape Cod Community College with an Associate's of Arts degree. She came in raw, but was trained and is doing an amazing job. It's a complicated job, and she's really taken to it. Next, we're going to introduce our newest patrol officers. The first one will be Ryan Golden. Ryan's a graduate of Cape Cod Technical High School. He's a graduate of the Mass. State Police Municipal Training Academy. He currently serves in the United States Army as a military police officer with Massachusetts Army National Guard. He serves, he served as a patrol officer with the Wellfeet Police Department. And his father is Jim Golden of the Provincetown Police Department, who is here. So, the next one, Eric Rondina, graduate of Sweetwater High School, National City, California. He's a veteran of United States Navy Global War on Terror. He's also a veteran of the United States Army Global War of Terror, so that's quite unique. He's graduated from Municipal Police Training Committee Plymouth Police Academy. Now, what's unique about Officer Rondina and Officer Golden is that both of them went to the police academy on their own. They paid their own way, did their own training, and it's paid off with two great officers for us. Next, we have Michael Chung, graduate of Boston College High School. He's also a graduate of Bridgewater State University with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. He's a nationally-registered emergency medical technician. He's also a veteran of the United States Marine Corps Global War on Terror. He recently graduated from Municipal Police Training Committee at the Randolph Police Academy. And our newest and youngest officer, a local-grown kid we're proud of, Liam Breen, graduate of Dennis Yarmouth Regional High School, 2018 graduate of Westfield State University with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. He also graduated from the Randolph Police Academy. We have one promotion to sergeant. Sergeant Frank Hennessy retired after many years. And we have Sergeant Richard Victor Jr. He's a 15-year veteran of the Yarmouth Police Department. He was promoted on September 9th, 2018. He's currently serving on the midnight aid shift as the patrol supervisor. He also is a graduate of Dennis Yarmouth Regional High School. He's also a graduate of Texas State University with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. He also is a U.S. Army veteran and a graduate of the Maine Municipal Police Academy. Next, we have something we're quite proud of, too. We have Lieutenant Andrew O'Malley. Lieutenant O'Malley is an 18-year veteran of the Yarmouth Police Department, is currently serving as a administrative lieutenant. He's a graduate of the University of Massachusetts with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice, and is also a graduate of Anna Maria with a master's degree in public administration. But the reason he is here tonight is because he just recently graduated from the FBI National Academy, which is some of the finest training that you want for a police administrator. 10-week course. He left his family and spent 10 weeks down in the academy, so we're quite proud of that. It helps build the future of the department and where we go in the near future. So, congratulations. Paul, you would like to introduce yourself personally to the Board of Selectmen, Town Administrator?
Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Yeah, welcome. Congratulations. Congratulations. Yeah. Congratulations. Mike, congratulations. Nice to meet you. Congratulations.
Next, we have a very special recognition for one of our detectives, Detective David Sneeweiss. David? David's a 20-year, 21-year veteran of the Yarmouth Police Department, currently serving as a detective. He's a graduate of Westfield State with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. But what's unique about David is he's also in the Navy Reserves. David was away for us for a year and just finished his deployment in the Mediterranean in the United States Navy. So, we appreciate your service to the town of Yarmouth and, just as importantly, to our country. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome home. We have two more to do. We've added some personnel in a part-time nature and one full-time. First one, Patrick McGuire. He is not here tonight. He's a part-time community behavioral health clinician. He's currently served as a full-time specialist with Massachusetts Department of Mental Health. He's a graduate of Randolph High School and also a graduate of Bridgewater State with two degrees, a bachelor's degree and a master's degree. Patrick works part-time, which is funded by someone else, so it's great. He's been a great addition to our staff and has been effective in helping us reduce some of the mental health issues that we deal with more commonly now. And lastly, we have Annie Catalano. Annie? You may not have met her, but you've made a lot of decisions about her position. We had the VAWA grant that we received a little over a year ago. Is a full-time victim service specialist advocate. And also, part of that grant was for you, the selectman, to authorize us to afford the matching funds that were needed for it. And if you remember those conversations, it was you all supported it wholly. And Annie is here working full-time. She's doing an awful lot for us. Detective Zontini is so grateful for her. And it really is to, if we can help reduce domestic violence, that's a big deal, and I think it's working. Oh, Patrick, there he is.
I'm from Plymouth.
Okay. All right. Well, there's Patrick. These are great additions, and it goes a long way to address the current situations that we deal with. It's ever-changing in this business, and we're in the forefront, and we're doing some good things that are helping a lot of people. So, I thank you. I haven't been able to thank you all for your support of what we went through last April. Selectmen were right there. You were there by our side, helping us. Town Administrator, right there that night, guiding us through this. So, I appreciate that, and the men and women of the Yarmouth Police Department appreciate it. So, on behalf of them, I have one of our, that you can have. It is Brad Erickson's employee number, and also Sean Gannon's.
Thank you very much.
If I might, Mr. Chairman, before you go, I'd like to take the opportunity. I think we've been through this exercise before. To me, it's a completely new meeting tonight. Not that it diminishes anybody previously, but the sense of responsibility that we, as a town, take in putting you guys on the street, I think every resident has felt that, and I think it's really, really important that they understand that when you're on duty, you're on our time, and we're responsible, and we can never let that happen again. So, when I shake your hand, and I, you know, I think Eric and I have been here long enough, we were here when we shook Sean's hand. And he was so young, and the challenges that you guys all have every single day are very complex. Simple policing is not what it used to be. And so, you have an advocate here for you. Your chief fights for you for everything that you need, and we do the best we can to try to provide it. So, I just wanted to go on the record in saying that. Thank you and welcome.
Chief, thanks again. You know, I'm so impressed with the credentials of the officers that you introduced tonight. You know, we're building a very strong, balanced department, and your leadership certainly is essential to the group. But thank you for what you've done.
Thank you.
Okay.
If I might, I just want to say, chief, I want to recognize and thank you for your leadership during that crisis. You proved what you were made out of. I think there's no question about that, and your officers did as well, and we're all very proud of you and how you responded to that terrible tragedy.
Thank you. Good night.
We'll take a minute while some people leave and...
It's the time to meet. You came for the show without working.
Welcome.
Thanks, Eric.
Thanks.
All right. I think things are quieting down. I had a call today from Suzanne McCauley, and she asked to be recognized to deliver a report. Welcome. How are you this evening?
Thank you very much. Suzanne McCauley, I'm the Yarmouth representative to the Assembly of Delegates. Before I start, I would like to just reiterate what Selectman Post and Selectman Stone had said, and also Chairman Holcomb. It gives a whole new meaning to swearing in police officers, which you don't really pay attention to when it happens, because I was also on the board when Sean Gannon was here, and I remembered how young they looked. And it really brings things down to earth and makes things very real. So, I just wanted to say it's very nice to have a happy occasion in the town of Yarmouth with some fine new officers. The Assembly of Delegates, as you know, is the county legislative body. We are on a two-year session, just like the state representatives and Congress. So, we just were re-elected in November. We have one representative from each town. We reorganized at our last meeting, which is our first meeting in January. I was elected Speaker of the Assembly again, and Susan Moran, a selectman from Yarmouth, excuse me, from Falmouth, is the deputy speaker. We, our primary responsibility, I would say, is the budget. So, we will be starting the county budget review in February. We will get it from the administration and the county commissioners. We will be spending three or four meetings, going line by line, item by item, over the budget as an entire board, which is a different method, but we will know that budget when we're done with it. We have been the recipients of a legislative action that gives the county the possibility for early retirement. So, this budget that's coming up in February is not going to reflect that budget, because they haven't really, the early retirement, they haven't really had the opportunity to finalize numbers and lists. They need to make sure that people who retire don't end up costing the county more than what you anticipate. So, there's a lot of numbers that need to be run. But in the future, I think it'll go for two main purposes, hopefully helping some of the expenses of the county, but also perhaps may trigger some restructuring of departments and different cost centers, once you have more senior people leaving. So, that's sort of a good project going forward. The dredge, which is of immediate concern to Yarmouth, the new dredge is, I think they're looking at trying to get it into the Bass River, and it's a very tight window, so I'm hoping that they will be able to do that. They are also looking, because they have an old dredge and a new dredge, they're looking at perhaps purchasing a second new dredge, and this might be for ponds and inland waterways, and it's sort of a smaller dredge to help with some of the wastewater cleanups and some of the scum in some of the freshwater. So, I'll keep you posted on that. On our big project this year, where we will be scheduling a charter review for the county, and I think it's long overdue, there are a lot of things that come up, like recall and term limits, and does the county even provide the services that are needed? Should the county look differently and be, you know, of a different structure? And I've had this discussion with several people in Yarmouth about different structures. So, that will be going on this year. And finally, we did meet with the Cape Cod Legislative Delegation, our last meeting in December, and covered every topic you can imagine, from the rest area to the sheriff's pension, to, I have two and a half pages of notes from that meeting. But I think the bottom line was, if there is anything, and I offer this to Chief Frederickson as well, anything that the town is looking for in terms of some sort of support or help at the legislative level, at the state level, that the Assembly can also add its voice as a county body that represents all towns, and the legislators said that that does help and that does make a difference when the delegation is trying to get things through the legislature. So, homewill petitions, whatever legislation that you're working with, if it's something that would be helpful, you know, you can certainly get it before the Assembly of Delegates, and we would be happy to get a, you know, a letter of support or some sort of resolution out perhaps to support you. And if I may, 16 years on the D.Y. School Committee, nine years as a Yarmouth Board of Selectmen member, 25 years working with the regional school district in daily contact. I can't tell you how disappointed I am in the way the new school project has come forward to the town of Yarmouth. I was the chairman of the last new school that came into this town, which was for the Building Committee for the Station Avenue School. We made sure we came before the voters. We made sure we had many discussions, lots of questions answered. We took our time. We made sure that it was, we listened to the taxpayers, and we made sure that we negotiated with the taxpayers about what was right for the town of Yarmouth. And I don't feel that that has happened this time, and I'm unfortunately disappointed that this seems, that this new regional school seems to be sort of a product of the regional school committee and not necessarily what's good for the town of Yarmouth, and that's my personal opinion.
Thank you, Suzanne. Okay, are there any other public comments? Yes, good evening. How are you, Chris?
Good, thanks.
Christine Greeley from West Yarmouth. First thing I was going to mention was just that, as you probably saw on the news and heard, the groundbreaking did take place on Friday for the new Cape Tech School. And one of the nice things that happened when we opened bids, we actually came in $9 million less than had originally been projected, so we're starting to save you money already. And within that process, we also had put in some funding and things for tariffs, depending upon if there's a change in increase in tariffs on materials and things for building. So, we may be actually be getting luckier and saving you some more money than that. So, we've got our fingers crossed. The second thing I wanted to mention is the fact that the comment period on the Vineyard Wind project is coming to a close at this point. And one of the things that's happening is the BOM, which is the Federal Bureau of Energy Management, is holding hearings. However, they have put out notices, and they can't even get an update from their website now because of the federal shutdown, but that the intended hearings that we're supposed to start this week out in Martha's Vineyard in Antucket and then continue into Hyannis in the coming week are still on hold. And so, we don't know, because originally their comment period was due to be January 21st, and that affects anything that's three miles out from our shoreline, out into federal waters. There's a lot of controversy going on, because the fishermen had had a lot of concerns about the project, and actually, the number of turbines has been dropped from 104 to 84 at this point, but they are still in negotiations about the actual positioning in the water because of the issue of both navigation and fisheries migration patterns, and whether or not the patterns, the placement of those turbines is interrupting some serious issues out there. The second comment period is to the Siting Board, to the EFsb. We obviously had those series of hearings in October, but the final comments and the final draft is sitting up on your counter upstairs with the others, all, you know, thousands of pages of them. Those comments are due by January 25th. To tell you the truth, a disappointment to me is the fact that even within all the hearings and the things that have been given as testimony about the inappropriativeness of Lewis Bay, Vineyard Wind refused to drop it. They still are proposing it as an alternative to the landing at Cobles Beach, and that should be of great concern still at this point, because it was very clearly stated and shown why it should not come in here. Final point on that is that with the associations that were around Lewis Bay that have fought so hard and the protection of that bay are beginning a process this year, and we welcome anyone who wants to join us on looking at the establishment of a preserve or a reserve status of some sort on Lewis Bay that would allow for the continuation of the current recreational and commercial uses of Lewis Bay that both Barnstable and Yarmouth share between our sailing schools, between the shell fisheries and that, and would allow us for dredging as needed and for us to do the kinds of mitigation that we're trying to do on nitrogen and everything in there, but would protect us forever from ever having anyone consider the fact that high-voltage commercial operations such as those cables should ever come in. So, that will be the offshoot of the people who spent thousands of hours. They still refer to us as certain Yarmouth citizens in the Vineyard Wind filings. They have no idea how many people worked, for how many thousands of hours in reading thousands of pages of things to get themselves informed, but that's what our intent is. So, that brings you up to date with the comments, BOM, January 21st, and the Siting Board, the 25th of January, if anyone has comments. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Vita?
Vita Morris. At last night's school committee meeting, I asked a question with regard to the new school building. As far as I could understand, the two town clerks will send their certified votes to the school committee, and I guess they would have to merge it, or something, you know, do something about it. And when I brought that up, and I said, I wonder under what law would you be doing that? And this was... At last night's School Committee meeting, I asked a question with regard to the new school building. As far as I could understand, the two town clerks will send their certified votes to the School Committee, and I guess they would have to merge it, or something, you know, do something about it. And when I brought that up, and I said, I wonder under what law would you be doing that? And this was all a big surprise to them. And the chair, who happens to be a lawyer, eventually mumbled something about the fact that the clerks were going to do it. And I said, no, no, I already spoke with the Yarmouth clerk, and he said his involvement ends with his certification of the votes in Yarmouth and sending it off to the School Committee. So they have nothing to do with this, any further than that. I think, I don't know what happened at the executive session, but it seems to me that we have some grounds for trying to deal with this in the courts, because that 16N, as I can, as far as I can tell, is very vague, and somebody seems to think that, I mean, the 14, the 16D is very complete. It says, you know, the town meeting shall vote, and if the two towns come from different directions, as happened, the nays have it, and that's it. And it speaks specifically about a two-town district. Now, 16N doesn't say anything like that, so there is some thinking about, with some people, that maybe what's necessary will have, there will have to be a default to that particular sentence about the two towns, and the nays would have it. How else could you do it equitably? So I'm hoping that we will, you will continue and try to explore what possibilities we have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that wants to address the board? Seeing none, we'll move to the next item on our agenda. It's a public hearing, new entertainment license for the Compass Rose.
Good evening. Could you introduce yourself for the record, please?
Good evening. My name is Andora Hamilton, and I am the owner of the Compass Rose in Yarmouth Port.
Okay. I'm going to read the public notice, and then you can go ahead at that point. "The Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority for the town of Yarmouth, has received an application for new weekday entertainment license from Compass Rose Hospitality Inc., doing business as the Compass Rose of Cape Cod, 277 Route 6A, Yarmouth Port, Mass. Andora Hamilton, manager. The Compass Rose is applying for entertainment to consist of one or two musicians at a time in the bar area in the main building of the inn. Musicians may at times sing as well as play guitar with no amplification. Hours of entertainment are 1:00 to 10:00 p.m. Hearing will be held on Tuesday, January 15, 2019, in the hearing room at the town offices, 1146 Route 28 South Yarmouth. The Board of Selectmen meeting begins at 6:00 p.m. Written comments will be accepted until 4:30 p.m., Friday, January 11, 2019. In the selectmen's office at Town Hall, verbal comments will be accepted at the hearing." Okay, why don't you tell us, in your own words, what you would like us to do? I'm sure it's contained in the notice pretty much, but...
It's very simple. We just wanted to add, the bar at the inn, as you may or may not know, is very just small and intimate. It's very much a community bar. Everyone that comes in is local or sometimes the guests at the inn. And we've, so many folks have mentioned it would be nice to have a singer or an acoustic guitar player, just for some background music. It's nothing loud or crazy. It's very simple enjoyment. It's inside, and it would always be finished by 10:00 p.m. because we do have guests in the inn that we have to be respectful of also.
Okay, I see you have a diagram attached. And the music is going to be, what, one musician in the parlor area?
Yeah, it's...
And another, there's another location in the bar itself?
Either right in the bar, on a bar stool with guitar, one person can fit very simply, or the parlor, which is right off of the bar, where we have a couple of sofas and leather chairs on the first floor of the inn, right as you walk in.
So these are alternate locations, one or the other, usually?
One or the other, for sure.
All right. Does anybody in the audience like to be heard on this? Vida?
I just want to say how grateful I am not to hear the words amplification, with amplification. It's the first time, because every time somebody has come in here, it's always with amplification, no matter how small the room is or anything. Thank you.
Tom.
Good evening, and thank you, Tom McNeil, with the Chamber of Commerce. We are totally in support of what she's trying to do, and you have done a wonderful job over there, and we continue to admire all your hard work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mary Ann Agresti, and I'm president of the Board of Directors at the Yarmouth New Church Preservation Foundation. We own the building across the street from the Compass Rose Inn, and I also would like to speak in support of Andora. She's been a wonderful new member of our community, and we've already been able to collaborate in a lot of beneficial things for that area of town, so...
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions from the board?
I just have a question about the, in the packet, talking about providing the Board of Selectmen with a new occupancy based on the expansion or addition of the premises, including the deck of terrace. I don't know, is that relevant?
You're not, you're not expanding the premises in any way, are you?
No.
It's just a question of that diagram and locating the musicians in those two particular locations. Yeah, I think they would have to submit a new floor plan if there was any modifications to the, to the building, and I don't think there are any, as I understand it.
Well, it's just because the same note is on both the Board of Health and the Building Department's comments. I'm not sure why.
We're definitely not expanding anything.
And did you, did you meet with the Building Department? Did you see the comments about entertainment should not improperly affect egress components? Seating adjustments? Shall maintain aisle ways following, you know, accessibility?
Absolutely.
I think the last time you were in was for a liquor license, was that correct?
Mm-hmm.
And I think we had some discussion about whether you were planning to serve meals, any kind of restaurant facilities, and I think at that time you were not considering that. Has that changed at all?
Not at this time, no. One, no, just slow.
So, so the bar, then, is that, is that oriented toward the guests? Or are you, or is the service broader than that to people coming in off the street?
No, it's been great for the public. It's been the local community. We have folks from the neighborhood that walk over. It's very much Yarmouth residents. It's sometimes, I think, the most we've ever had, and there is about eight people. It's very simple, very quiet. And the guests, when, in the summertime, we have 12 rooms. We've been lucky to get six of those folks down all at the same time. It's very simple, it's very laid back, it's pretty intimate.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
No, the only, the only comment that we always have is that the music needs to stay inside the building.
Absolutely.
So we don't affect neighbors. It's been our policy. Although that policy, some way, has changed with some things, but typically in the past for indoor entertainment, that's the rule.
No, I agree.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Hey, do we have a motion to oppose the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Does anyone want to make a motion to approve the application?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, you're all set. Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Do you need me to sign? No, that's just what I come for historically.
Do you need her to sign anything? She said.
No.
Oh, all set.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on then to the next item on the agenda. We're going to have a discussion of the town meeting attendance. Well, it looks like we have a very noteworthy committee here.
Actually, I couldn't have said it any better myself. This committee was something special, and I can't express how grateful I am for their willingness to help me out with this. Just to give you a little bit of history, last year, the Charter Review Committee met and made its recommendations to update the charter. And after we were done with that process, we, I actually looked out to them and asked them, is it, give me a hand, just talking a little bit about town meeting and what we could possibly do to try to increase the numbers, try to increase awareness in the town of elections and the democratic process, and they were all more than willing. And together with several members of the Board of Selectmen who came in from time to time and gave us their input, we were able to kind of review where we've been with town meeting and potentially where we might go with it. You've gotten a couple of pages of recommendations that we put together. Some of them strictly speak to ways of highlighting how we can get more word out about the town meeting and town elections and how we can have a better awareness of when the occasions are coming up for involving yourself in town governance. But the major ones that we wanted to bring forward tonight involve, you know, how we do town meeting. And you'll notice in the second section, one of the major ones, of course, is that the committee has made the recommendation that they'd like to have you consider splitting the town meeting and really trying to shorten it up a little bit. We found that one of the major deterrents of people wanting to attend town meeting is simply the length of it. And you, you try to balance that, of course, with the right of people to talk to the selectmen, to talk to each other about important issues that are going on in town. But we have so many articles that are often dealt with at town meeting that it's difficult not to go three, four, five. Even last year, we went six hours for a town meeting, and that's just difficult, to say the least. So one of the main recommendations is that we take a real look at possibly spitting, splitting the town meeting and having a spring and a fall town meeting. We had made a recommendation that certain items could be held off until the fall, but obviously, that's your purview, not ours. And it's just our feeling that this is one significant way that we can encourage people to come, if they know there's a time certain that they can expect to be out at a town meeting. I think one of the other major changes that surprised me, but the committee was very strong in their desire to turn the town meeting to a weeknight versus the weekend. Years ago, when we made the change for the Saturday town meeting, it was hoped first that we could get some of our elders, make it a little bit easier for them to come, because driving at night is just difficult for some of them. It's difficult for me now. And so it was hoped that Saturday would be easier for them. But it was significantly also hoped that we could get families to participate a little bit more, because, you know, families are working two and three jobs and going home after a day and taking care of their kids. We thought it would really work out well for families, but it, the numbers just haven't proven that out. When we look at the numbers, we actually did better with attendance when we had it on a weeknight versus the Saturday, except for the two outlying meetings that we had where we had significant issues that brought out large numbers. So there are several recommendations that are made that were given to you in the packet. We have many of the members of the committee here tonight. We are available if you have any questions, if you have any insights that you'd like to share with us. Going forward, I'd like to try to hold on to a couple of these people, if not all of them, to kind of monitor where we go at town meeting and how we're doing and how we can continue to improve. But we put these forward in hopes that you'll give us your feedback and let us know what you think is worthy of following through on and what you perhaps are not as supportive of. And then let's try and work together and try to re-educate, I guess. We seem to have forgotten how to teach civics. And Mr. Forrest, maybe we can partner with you at the college, and I've been trying forever to work with the high school and perhaps the middle school, trying to get them to work with their parents and re-educate people on the importance of participating in local governance. But I think some of the recommendations that we've made to you do that. And we look forward to moving forward and trying to implement some of these and take some feedback from you as to maybe some ideas that you'd like us to follow up on. So unless, is, if any of the committee members would like to add anything or suggest anything, I think this would be a great time for that. And I know they're all available to answer questions. And again, I just cannot begin to express my gratitude to them and for you, for the input that you've all had. But these people gave three or four different meetings, significant amount of time, and I'm so appreciative of that. And when you look at them, you recognize the scope of experience that we had here. We had ex-selectmen, we had an ex-town manager. We had volunteers that have been volunteering in this town for ages and just doing it day in and day out. And I was so impressed with that and so willing to hear their feedback. And so I hope you'll take these recommendations seriously and help us to move forward and try to get us back on track with better attendance at our town meetings and elections.
Okay. We have comments or questions from the board?
Well, we've talked about this several times, so this is great. We did get the opportunity to see this a little while ago. The only thing that we talked about that wasn't on here, and I think our consensus was that we supported any, anything, all, all the ideas are, are great, was a, was a pre-town meeting.
Yep.
I know one of the issues that you talked about was the length of the meeting, and educating people in advance, I think, could possibly be helpful. It's something we haven't tried before, but I know that Dennis does it, and, but I don't think they have the, the public dialogue at town meeting, which keeps it short. I don't know if that's a result of the way they operate or because a lot of people already have their questions answered prior, but that's a piece that, that this board discussed additionally, that...
Obviously, I cannot make that decision for you, but I think it's a very good possibility for your board to consider.
Yeah, I just didn't know if it was something that your group talked about.
We did, and it's definitely on the table.
Take a look at it. Five, five down.
Yeah.
Page two.
I can't read that.
Yeah, we talked about presentations at different parts of town, whether my committee
members are willing to help me do that or selectmen, but also I know that your board talked about having a pre-town meeting. I don't know, with, in all the time that I've been involved, we've never tried that. It might be worthwhile. I think between getting some simple exemplars out of the articles, explanations, whether they're in the warrant or their handouts at the town meeting, maybe a couple of local meetings at strategic points in town to talk about contentious articles or confusing articles. But I think as much information as we can get out there is, is all to the good here. And if you're willing to participate in that process, I just think it would be good for everybody and shorten the town meeting. And not that, you know, time isn't the only factor that we consider. I just, I always, my de facto position is always... I just, I always, my de facto position is always let the meeting be what the people want it to be and let them talk as long as they want to talk. It's the one chance they get. But at the same time, it's the one thing that keeps a lot of people away. So it's a tough balancing act. And we think that splitting the meeting is a big answer to that question. And then keeping a time definite is a big answer to that. And then getting as much information. So absolutely, if you guys are willing to do that, we're willing to help and in whatever ways we can.
Yeah, I know we, we haven't recently, but in years past, we used to have a spring and a fall occasionally when it was necessary, but we never really purposefully did it unless it was necessary to save.
All right. A lot of towns do it, you know.
My, my, my thought about it, though, is, you know, we can barely get them to one meeting. Can we get them to two?
The reason you can't get them to one is it's too long.
It's too long.
Well, we used to do it, you know, we would do it, start on Monday evenings and it would go to Tuesday or Wednesday if needed. I mean, we never went to a Thursday, did we?
We went a couple of weeks.
But, I mean, it didn't used to go as late. It would be kind of a shorter thing and, but, but some things we just, we have to get through depending upon what the articles are.
Was, was there any discussion of what the content might be of the alternative meeting, let's say it was an October or November day, time period? Was there discussion of what might be on that agenda in terms of types of items versus what would be in May?
Anybody want to speak to that? Dave, you want to speak to that?
Evening, David Reed.
Oh, yeah, Dave.
I think a couple of things that did come up in the discussion, not to lock anybody into a specific pattern, but probably a community preservation fund issues, zoning and local planning issues, probably, Dennis in particular splits it in that fashion whenever they can. And, and housekeeping issues. So the, the fall is probably the least controversial of the two, lesser controversial of the two, but allows the budget and related items to be dealt with as the primary focus of the spring meeting, which is something we have to do anyway, and allows the less controversial or the in-town items to be taken care of at the fall meeting. One of the things that people have observed, both for good and for bad, is that some people want to come to a town meeting for one issue or for one group of issues, and they're not really interested in other things. And by splitting it, and answer to Tracy's question, that might actually improve the attendance, not necessarily in numbers, but in participation. If people know they can come out for the things they're interested in and that will be the focus of the meeting, maybe they're more likely to come to that meeting. And if, if some people who only want to talk about the budget because that's their primary concern, they might not come to the fall meeting. But others who are interested in zoning and planning and, and community preservation as their bailiwick or their focus of attention, they might prefer to have those separated and only come to the meeting that, in the fall, when they really want to come and can participate. Because to me, and several of the members of the board raised the question, that it's not just about numbers coming to the meeting, it's not just having bodies in the seats. It's having people who come, who want to participate and who can stay and participate and have the opportunity to know what's on the agenda and be able to be there and have their say and have it effective for them and for the town. So it, to me, I, I like the way we've got the no quorum requirement right now because the people who come are coming to participate, not just to be a, a body in the seat. And, and I think the effective participation is more important than just the number of participants. So that was one of the focus that, that really came around through a lot of these different suggestions, is to make it an effective participation, the opportunity to participate effectively, not just the number of people who show up.
Other questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'm generally very supportive of these recommendations. And as Tracy said, we've talked quite a bit about them, so I think we're certainly very, very engaged. I'd like to speak directly to the point Mr. Moderator made with respect to civics engaging the students. There's a new civics requirement adopted by the legislature, signed into law by the governor, that, that requires eighth grade students to get involved in a civics project.
Wonderful.
And school superintendents are actually, and school officials are actually meeting. I was invited to a meeting the end of the month for, from a school superintendent in a, in another community to participate in that discussion about civics, opportunities, projects and initiatives like that. So I think, I think this is something to seize on. I think this dialogue and discussion with the schools about how to help them meet that requirement and utilize town meeting, I do think can be, it's certainly worth exploring. And I think it, it can certainly have some opportunities in terms of being of some help. I've, I've always been someone who's complained about the lack of civic education. We've sort of walked away from it. I know when I was a student, school civics was part of the norm. But as someone who teaches American government at a community college, I'm always amazed at the number of students that come in that, and they know nothing about the Constitution, they know nothing about the Bill of Rights, they know nothing about how our government works. And when you quiz the students as they come in on who the, who your senators are, who your congressman is, who your reps are, you don't, I don't even go to the Board of Selectmen. But generally, the lack of awareness and, and understanding is, is just amazing. You know, I'm kind of reminded always of this story in the aftermath of the Constitutional Convention. Ben Franklin was approached by this woman who asked him, "Well, what government did you create, Mr. Franklin?" And he responded by saying, "Well, we created a republic, but only if you can keep it." And so to some degree, I think the people that have been involved in crafting our government and their sort of our democratic institutions certainly see the importance of civic engagement and involvement. And I think now that the legislature's passed this initiative, I think we should try to seize, seize the, the opportunity to try to get more kids involved in understanding local government here. And I'm happy to help in any way possible. I've been trying to get the college to actually do a course on local government, local and state government. So what I've done is I've integrated into my class. So I do some local government and I require my students to visit with a, come to their town, go to their town, meet with their town administrator and submit a report at the end of the semester on how their town works, who's in charge, what the big issues are, and go to at least a select board meeting or a town meeting. So, I mean, I'm, I'm trying, but I think now with this requirement, there might be an opportunity to expand initiatives like this. So I would, I, I will definitely be ready to work with you in terms of exploring how to take advantage of this. So I, I do think that's a really good idea. It's a new idea, but it's definitely now with this new law, it's worth, worth pursuing.
Lighthouse Charter School has a remarkable program.
They do.
And every year, we, I get calls from a student that lives in Yarmouth that goes to Lighthouse, and they're charged with going through the warrant, picking an article, writing pros and cons and interviewing people. And they come to town meeting. And they consistently, every year, they say to me, "What do you think the big issue's going to be?" And I say to them every year in my responses, "That's the beauty of town meeting. What I think the big issue might be and what it turns out to be are two different things." So, but I've always thought that that's a great thing because, because open town meeting is amazing. It's the purest form of government. I would hate to go away from it. But when they can come and they can see that one person can get up and sway an entire audience based on
Right.
their words.
Right.
How does that, I mean, I don't know. I guess we're all in a, in this room because it appeals to us, but you'd have to think it would give a little spark to say, "Hey, you know, this is, this is good stuff." So they, if anybody could model it after that, I think it's a great idea that, what they do there.
Couple of great collaterists that have come from this is that, first off, the young professionals on Cape Cod are doing a mock town meeting in Falmouth, but they've met with me several times and I'm going to work with them on that. I'm hoping to bring them to Yarmouth. They got a grant from Falmouth, so hopefully we can find some money for them. But they're working hard because there's a movement among the younger people now to get involved and get engaged. So I thought that was a real positive from these meetings we've had. And then the other thing is the, the chamber, Mary Vilbon, has just been great in terms of her willingness to really reach out to the business community in Yarmouth and get them involved as well. So I really think, you know, we have a lot of support, we have a groundswell here to try to get participation in town government at a new level and just to, again, re-educate and remind people of the rights that they can very easily lose if they don't practice them.
I have a question on the, the pre-town meeting. Because I think there's, there's an understanding that, you know, it's used in some other communities as, as a way to speed up the, the town meeting, reduce the redundancy perhaps of some of the comments that might occur at, at town meeting. But was there any discussion of combining or, or using a pre-town meeting also to reach out to non-resident taxpayers? Was there any thought given to that?
I don't think we had much discussion about that per se, but I know that, that is, that is done in some towns, that they, they treat the pre-town meeting as, at least in part, an opportunity for non-voting taxpayers to
Come and question.
at least know what's going on and to, to express their views to the, to the rest of the town. Not in a voting fashion, but by, in a communicative fashion.
So it's simply a matter of opening it up?
Sure.
You know, it's not really a...
It's a great idea.
Well, we've talked about it, Mr. Chairman, we just haven't done anything about it.
Right, right, yeah.
I love the mock idea because I think to younger people, when you open the warrant, it's, lays out all the rules. And the rules are, you know, what you're supposed to do when can be very overwhelming to somebody who's never gone before.
Right.
So watching it and seeing it in reality, how it might happen or how it might play out, you know, not everybody has a dorcas that calls the question. So I think when you look at that just on the surface...
But we're glad we didn't.
Yeah. It's, it's to a younger person or somebody who's never done it before, it is intimidating.
It is intimidating.
And I think if you can get rid of that intimidation and educate and, it kind of happens, it kind of, you know, I mean, I think if you go, you'll see that it happens, but you have to get that confidence. A lot of people think it's bigger than that. Like they, I don't, I wouldn't know what to do.
It can come across sometimes as an insider's game, you know, where people know the rules and then others don't. But one of the things I've tried to do is, you know, to be welcoming of people to just ask the question, you know, "We'll figure out how to get you there once you tell me what it is that you want to do." So it shouldn't be a secret. You know, people shouldn't be afraid to come up and state or ask what, how to raise a certain topic or make an amendment. You know, we should be encouraging that. And, you know, we try with the warrant, we try to give some explanations. I thought the idea of giving you some of the acronyms is a great idea because we talk about these initials and people's eyes glaze over like they don't know what we're talking about. And you have to be experienced at town meeting to know. So, you know, explaining all of that stuff is...
Bud would always keep them in check.
I'm sorry?
Bud would always keep them in check with their acronym.
Right, right, exactly. So anyway, I mean, I'm excited, I'm very excited about this eighth grade initiative. I've been trying to get our public schools to come and do like the Charter School had, and maybe this is the venue now that we can do that. But, you know, we really do want to get our schools involved and get our, I don't know, our young people, but our parents as well as the rest of the town.
Well, if you get the kids involved, usually the parents follow. That's what I've noticed.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, I think as you can see, there's, there's a general support from the board for these. I guess the next question is, how do we get, how do we put these things into action and move forward?
As far as the recommendations for splitting the meeting, moving it to Monday, I think, you know, obviously you have to make those decisions sooner rather than later, just to give us some guidance. And your town manager, as far as planning articles and where to put them. Beyond that, I think, you know, if we can just keep connection, maybe through Chris, maybe through one of the selectmen, in terms of directions you'd like to go and things, initiatives that you'd like to hit on first, we'll follow up with those and try to get as much of this done as soon as possible, as well as possible.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
What are the two or three things that you would like us to do first?
I don't want to speak for the board, but I think...
Well, we, you mean, there are a lot of recommendations here, but what are the things that you think would have the most impact?
Split the meeting.
First thing you need to do, I think it requires a bylaw amendment to go back to a Monday evening meeting.
Yeah.
I think that's the only thing that requires a, a bylaw amendment. Everything else is a matter of policy for you to decide. Because the fall meeting is, is a special town meeting anyway, so you can schedule that anytime you want with any, any warrant articles or subjects that you want. It certainly would probably be a matter of setting a policy of what types of things you would prefer to schedule in the fall, just so there's some consistency from year to year. But I don't think that requires anything more than just a consensus among yourselves for the benefit of the public as to what you're going to try to do in the fall, what you would have as your preferred agenda for a fall meeting and, and when you'd like to have it. But I don't think that requires any, any massive decision other than each year deciding when you want to have it, what you want to do, and having some consistency in that, in that practice. The rest is educational and make it up as you go along in terms of getting people informed, getting information out there and finding different ways that may or may not work better than others to get that information out to voters ahead of time.
Would you also, in terms of the general policy decisions about the rescheduled town meeting to Mondays, suggest some general parameters as to the length of those meetings?
We talked about a, a period, if not to exceed 9:30.
I saw that in here.
You know, with...
I was wondering just how resolute the committee was on that point.
Well, I think the idea is, you know, to, to, to try to put some parameter in place, not to start new articles after 9:30. Now, if the business that is slated for that meeting has to be accomplished, then, you know, we talk about a second night, whether it's the next night or moving into the following week. But, you know, setting a time definite so that people can expect that they'll be home by 10:00 PM, I think is probably advisable.
Well, we frequently did have the carryover meetings from one night to the other. I, I, I wouldn't want to suggest you do anything to, to dampen public participation or to try to jam too much into the first night.
Right.
I, I think it's just a question of, you know, how, how much time does, does an individual in the audience want to sit there at one particular sitting? You know, six o'clock to 9:30, three and a half hours? I think that's probably reasonable. After that, I think people start to lose attention.
We did talk about 6:30 just to give people time to grab a bite to eat.
All right, so three hours or so. If they go come back a second night, you, you're always going to get people that have different interest in different articles anyway. Some of them will return the second night, some won't, depending on whether they had their say in their articles. But I, I do think and do want to agree with you, Mr. Moderator, that it's the people's meeting, and so you have to be flexible and you have to make sure that the public gets their opportunity to be as involved as they want to be. You have very, very few people in this town voting on appropriations that run into many millions of dollars. It's, it's ironic. Everybody will complain about what happens with their tax dollars, but very few people are there to have any input as to what they want to see the dollars go toward or not. So we, we definitely have a public participation problem. I don't think it's unique to Yarmouth. And I think a lot of your suggestions here should help in that regard. And I do note that in two particular places in your suggestions, you do leave open the opportunity for pre-town meetings. And I think that the only, the only caveat I'd raise there is I, I think the purpose of a pre-town meeting should be to inform people, not necessarily to deprive them of their opportunity in the public forum.
Yep, I agree, I agree. The chambers offered us an opportunity to go to one of their meetings and talk, you know, about some of the articles that are coming up, but also to get their feedback about what they think is important. So, you know, maybe it's a team effort where one or two of the selectmen come out with us and, you know, represent so that they, they're getting some of the feedback as well. But the more of this that we do, I believe this, you know, the stronger our process will be and hopefully the higher our numbers will be.
Okay.
Mrs. Stone, just on the issue of the length of time of a meeting, we had suggested 6:30 to 9:30 as a logical amount of time that we thought probably would be sufficient to cover the business that, that needed to be done at an annual town meeting. But I, I would think if, in terms of, you asked about the procedure, and a bylaw changed to switch it to a Monday night, I would think it probably would not be appropriate to have that length of time specified in the bylaw because that leaves it too inflexible. You wouldn't want the moderator to come down to the last article of the town meeting and not be able to complete it. be able to complete it, because we only need five more minutes, but we'll be on a time limit. So I think there's got to be, that probably is not part of the bylaw, that's probably a policy timeframe, rather than a bylaw specification, to allow the moderator a little bit of flexibility on that time.
I'm glad you raised that point. That was certainly not my intention. We were talking, in the context of my comments, about general policy considerations that this board would put forth. And, no, that always has to be left open to the discretion of the moderator, looking at how much more business he has to conduct. If he's close to finishing, it's 9:30, obviously, in a situation like that, he'll go forward and do the last article or two. But if he's halfway through, and it's 9:30, then we'll probably go into the second evening. But that would be his call.
Okay.
Thank you all for your work.
Yeah, you've done a lot of work, and very thorough recommendations, and a lot of thought has gone into this, so we appreciate the work that you've done.
Thank you, I really appreciate the work they've put in, and the depth of intelligence that went into some of these suggestions, and your feedback as well. So thank you, I look forward to going forward and implementing some of these, and being successful.
Okay.
Jimmy, just, if I may, before you leave, for the benefit of the public, as well as the board, it was just pointed out to me that there's a typo in our report to you.
The AM.
It indicates 6:30 to 9:30 AM, for the Monday meetings.
Yeah, oh yes, that's right. 6:30 in the morning, that would be great.
I'm all for it, honestly.
An early start.
You have the whole day left.
The stenographer typed that.
Okay, yes, Chris.
I think the final thing, because I think Dan's been very good about thanking all of us for our work, but also Chris was very much involved with this. And the reason why there's any logical, linear sort of order to what's up there is because he helped him put it together, and get the PowerPoint together, so, thanks.
All right.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great, thanks again.
Thank you.
Terrific group of people.
You get paid.
They don't.
That's right. So, Chris, does this end up in your action plan? Is that...
This is an Invisio way?
On your...
It sounds like it.
All right. We'll move on to the next item on our agenda. We have a fiscal 2020 budget review for municipal operations. You know, I don't know if anybody else's...
You think we should have put his appointment first, before this...
That's what I'm thinking.
I think we should put his appointment.
He's not even qualified to give a presentation yet.
There's a whole lot riding on this presentation.
What do you want to happen?
You know, I don't know about anybody else, but, you know, it just seems to me like we just turned the millennium, and we had all kinds of concerns about what was going to happen going to...
Oh, Y2K?
Yeah, Y2K. And now we're 2020, and time passes quickly, so. Rich, welcome.
I've been here for almost all of that.
That's right.
I told some of us.
Well, thanks for having me. I think you, believe you have this in your packet, and it's on the PowerPoint on the screen, for those at home, to talk about the Municipal Operations Department budget for FY 2020. As you know, I am interim technical services director, and as part of my responsibilities in moving the department forward, I kind of, when I took over, I looked at the operation, how we're doing business, and part of that was administratively, and how we budget. And so, the budgets presented a little bit differently, different naming accounts, because I thought it made a lot more logical sense, and when I could present it to the administration, we could talk logically about what isn't contained within those budgets, and obviously, when I come and talk to you as well. But, a quick overview of what we do, as you know, the large effort of the department is IT-related, but we're really trying to expand that, because IT is really kind of growing into its tentacles, into a lot of different areas of an operation. And so, we do, the Municipal Operations Department does purchasing and procurement, energy management coordination, the IT, which is the basic network, but also supporting all the applications, or many of the applications within town, website and media, project management, the large effort being the Water Resources Advisory Committee, some fleet management, and other projects that come along, including collective bargaining, planning, and a lot of decision support relating to departmental operations. So, we do a lot of things, and it's not just me, we've got a great staff that works really hard in making sure all that happens. We've been, in each of those areas, we've made a lot of progress on a lot of projects in each of those areas, and so I'm proud of what we've done in the last six months, and over the last year as well. So, that being said, this is a summary of our budget. I know you've got the budget books and the budget details, this is the summary of that budget, and the newer, perhaps more meaningful names of accounts. And you can see, a large part of our budget is salaries, and we have no new positions, and the only changes are contractually agreed-upon steps, and things like that. Second largest part of our budget is licenses and maintenance agreements, and it's gone up quite a bit, almost a little over $31,000. We don't have much discretion in those, our discretion is, do we want to keep the application that we have or not? The largest piece of that is our financial management software, Munis, which is about $115,000 to support annually, and it's not an easy matter to elect to change financial management software, it's pervasive throughout the town's operation, and how we process invoices, payroll, in any manner of things. IT services is the other area, is going up from 35,900 to 93,000, almost 94,000, and when I get into the changes here, we'll talk about that in a bit. Bottom line is, we're going up $97,000, which is a substantial increase from what we normally try to achieve, given the budget direction, but the next page here kind of explains that and puts it into perspective. So, as I mentioned, the anticipated wage increase is contractual, the remaining costs are basically level funded, based on what the actual costs are in FY 19. Townwide telephone costs are up.
Does that include cell phones?
Yes.
Is that why it's so expensive?
No, I think it has to do with the utilization of phones, and the number of phones and lines that we have. Cell phones do, but we've been, in looking into that level of detail, we may, if someone that's responsible for managing our cellphone usage, and generally, as one phone goes on, it's because someone else is dropping off, and we manage that program pretty much along that lines. And if there's something new, we would try to find a way to supplement, or pay for that.
It just struck me, is $99,000, $100,000, when most people are moving towards cable, you know, in terms of telephone, it's getting cheaper.
Well, one of the, not in this budget, but since you've mentioned it, one of the objectives for next year would be, we've got a aging phone system that is approaching the end of its useful, affordable life, and so we'll be looking at that. There's a lot of options that I want to get into, discussing too much, because it's not in the purview of this budget, but there's a lot of options moving forward regarding the use of technology and communications. So, you might see a change in how we do that in the future, but at the moment, it is how we have had it. Vendor increases to existing licenses and support agreements, I've got actual firm numbers from almost all of our significant vendors on those, and that increases about $8,300. And increase in internet and backup service costs, again, is adjusting to actual levels, what we're actually paying this year. The new items, the first one is, in addition to the $8,300 for existing licensing and support agreements, we have two new applications that have been paid for by grants. The first is Invisio, and the second is the OpenGov applications, and those have previously had been funded and covered by grants from the LTA. That's no longer the case, and this is the year that we need to bring it on, so that's the cost of bringing on what we currently have into our budget. The second two items are new items, and those are a result of last January, when we had the pipe break in the attic, and caused a flood here in Town Hall, there were a lot of damage to the IT infrastructure. Took that opportunity to have a pretty thorough evaluation of how we do this operation. The result of that is, for about a half a million dollars worth of damage, we've had quite a bit of negotiations with the insurance company, and we've reached an agreement, and the result of that is, they're going to be replacing that equipment, not as it existed, because they agree it wasn't a very good situation, and didn't want to have a recurrence of a similar situation. And so we've undertaken, in the next, next week actually, as they kick off, a, what's we call the virtualization project. So we're taking our 32 physical servers that we've got located around town, and here in Town Hall, and we're going to consolidate, not all of them, but most of them, into two, it's called host machines, and all those servers are hosted virtually. And so, that is a huge upgrade in how we're going to be able to operate, we can manage those things remotely, monitor them more easily, troubleshoot and resolve issues much more quickly. So, overall, it'd be a great increase to the productivity and operating environment of the IT department, but as part of that process, that'll be entirely paid for by the insurance company. The other thing they want us to include, though, is what happens if the first host machine goes down, we go to the second host machine. What if both host machines go down, some catastrophic event, then what do you do? And originally, the thought was, perhaps we could have a similar setup over at the police department, but because of the way our infrastructure's set up, that wasn't feasible. So the solution was, and actually is a better solution in the long run, a web service, you may have heard of AWS, or Amazon Web Services, we've elected to go with what's called Azure, which is, those machines fail, then the failover goes to the cloud. And as long as we have internet access, we can access and have, and resume operations. It's not a snap of the fingers, but it's much more quickly than what we had available to us up until this point. And so the thought process there is, a secondary facility within town would be great, but would be even better, though, is the cloud in the event of a wide-scale geographic occurrence, perhaps like a hurricane, and you need to relocate operations and need it to operate, we could have an agreement with a offcape community, perhaps, to co-locate space and get up and running. That costs a lot of money when you actually utilize it, they charge based on data. We're not planning on utilizing it, and if we did, it would be covered by insurance. However, to keep the service available, and refreshed and up to date, does have to take data, and the cost of that is $30,000 per year, as an estimate. Secondarily, going through this whole evaluation, one of the glaring shortfalls that we thought we had, and are trying to rectify, is, was not a lot of ongoing planning, and so, and we did not have ongoing 24-by-7 monitoring of our servers and network infrastructure. So sometimes things would occur and go wrong, or be going down that path of occurring, going wrong, and if we could intercede, we could correct it before it became a major problem. But in our circumstances, that wasn't the case, and it became a major problem. And sometimes those problems would occur, and we wouldn't know about them for a while. And so, the other change proposed was 24-by-7 monitoring with what's called a managed service provider, an MSP, this is a third party that attaches a remote agent to our devices, and can monitor them, has a help desk, and gets, receives alerts, and it's managed and staffed 24/7. And if an issue arises on a critical server, we can be assured we've got a 24/7 response to correct that. And so, the other thing, in talking to some of these providers, we've got a pretty good arrangement that we can execute. We have a provider that's willing to open up their help desk to us, to use as our internal help desk. So, up through now, we had been using a homegrown, or I shouldn't say homegrown, but we've configured and managed our own help desk with some degrees of success, but I'd rather have this third party have that, they have the application they use, and I want to configure and utilize theirs, and integrate it into our operation. And so, anything that goes wrong on the monitoring can go on that help desk, anything we want to manage internally can go on our help desk, and that's how we'll start to do business. And we can get that for very nominal additional costs for these core services. The other aspect of it is not only the monitoring, but the planning. So on the planning end of things, a lot of times, what we tend to do was to replace things, or put a Band-Aid on something to get it by, till we could wholesale replace it. And so, as part of my capital budget presentation, when I presented the capital budget to the Capital Budget Committee, was I don't want to come to them and say, I need $25,000 for this server, I need $18,000 for that server. I said, I want a server and a PC replacement program, and here's how much it's going to cost on an annual basis, and I want to be strategic about how we do that, and we have a constant level of cost. Well, same thing with our IT infrastructure. I don't want things to get to a spot where they break, and then I got to go get an article specifically for that one thing that broke, and then fix it. I want to plan these things accordingly, and so, having a, what we call a VCIO, that we can consult with, that's, has a relationship with us on a month-to-month basis, and can offer us a very high level of engineering and technical expertise to direct that effort, seemed to me to be very cost-effective. And so, for example, we have a project, I won't bore you with the details, but we call it our subnetting project, so that each location in town can be on its own. Right now, everybody's together, and there's some security issues related to that, and if there's a problem on the network, a virus, ransomware of those nature, on one location, that could potentially affect all of the locations, and be very hard for us to shut that down. What subnetting do is, you know, the golf department would be different from the Town Hall, would be different from the library, would be different from the fire department. So if you've got a problem at the fire department, you lock that down, and the fire department has a problem, but not everybody else has a problem. So that subnetting project, if we were to hire that out and have that done by an outside firm, probably would cost between $50,000 to $75,000. Through an arrangement that we're working with now, I fit it in, because it was such a substantial need and investment, I found a way to get this done with existing funds, and that person is coming in on a month-to-month basis, and is going to direct our staff how to do it over the next 12 to 18 months internally, for no, basically no additional cost than our internal staff time. So, those are the types of things that this type of person would be able to, enable us to facilitate and move forward. So, in summary, the budget's up about 13%, it's $97,000, and those are the reasons why. Any questions?
Yep, I should have done the appointment first. No, I'm kidding. I kid. I only have a question related to security, data security, with all the outside servers and access. How are we protecting all the data?
Well, we have a Symantec antivirus on every machine, and we're converting that to a new product called Webroot. And this 24-by-7 monitoring helps to monitor PCs, so if they see any abnormalities in the operation of a PC, or the performance of a PC, it generates an alert that we can respond to that specific PC. So, in the past, we'd rely on someone to call up, us up, after two or three or four days of being frustrated and saying, my PC is really slow, and I don't know what's going on, and then eventually us getting back to them at some point, and troubleshooting, and maybe it was that PC, or maybe it was another device on the network that was contributing to the issue. It wasn't a great solution. So, this budget provides for better security. Part of what I'd like to complete with the VCIO, as part of this budget, is a information security audit and assessment, it's a recommended best practice, and that's something we need to do. And so, a couple years ago, we had a vendor do a, kind of an inventory audit of, you know, where we stand on our network, and they gave a list of recommendations that were partially addressed, and I'm going through and making sure we're addressing most of those now. And so, the next phase of that, now, once we get those issues resolved, is that assessment, and also, there are a couple other assessments, especially when we get into processing credit cards and things like that, that we need to make sure that we're tightening up.
Eric?
You know, this subnetting, and virtual hosts, and VCIOs...
I know, it's right in the, to be your tongue, right?
Yeah, you know, I talk about that stuff regularly. Yeah, you know, I talk about that stuff regularly, so I'm very well-versed in these things. But, you know, I, it sounds to me like you are finding efficiencies where you can. There are obviously some places where, you know, costs increase in terms of, you know, additional licenses. These are all things that we need. But, you know, I can appreciate the fact that you've saved us, what'd you say it was, $75,000 by?
Fifty, I'd say.
Fifty. You know, by kind of finding someone to train town staff. So, you know, the fact that it, the 13% increase, it's a small problem, and I think what we're going to find out is probably a bigger problem at some point. But, you know, I appreciate that you've found efficiencies where you can, and, you know, the cost of business, while technology is great, you know, and with security breaches, you know, it's expensive. And that was one of the questions I had, was, you know, virtual hosting, does that mean that the servers are located someplace else? I mean, are they in Texas or India?
So you mostly know that I'm an accountant, correct?
Yeah.
I don't know that-
Well, you're going to be the municipal operations director in a couple of minutes.
The high-level technical details of how that works, but we do have two host machines here, and then you create through those hosts, virtual machines that operate out of the cloud.
But you may be worthwhile to mention that the flood caused us to move the apparatus from down here to-
Right. So, to your comments, I think I certainly had a new look at some things, and it was forced upon us because of the flood. And so we kind of looked at how we're doing business and how we could do it better. So these things represent an increase, but what's not in the operating budget is all the articles that get passed at town meeting. And I probably should have remembered that figure in my head a little bit better, but when I went in front of the Capital Budget Committee, you know, the annual ask that I would be asking for, for capital replacement, was a level ask year over year, which over a three-to-five-year period would be less than what was asked for individually, article by article. So one of the things we need to do is a data security assessment. That would be a separate ask out of free cash, probably, for a few thousand dollars to have that done. Well, that's a, that's business that needs to be done. It needs to be built into how we're doing it. And so the VCIO is going to do that for us. I don't need a separate ask for it, because that's the thing, you know, those are the things that we'll do for less money by having someone coming in and doing it on a routine basis, as opposed to one-offing each of these things. So the flood really gave us the opportunity to look at how we're doing business, and will no longer, as of next Tuesday, hopefully, have any servers located on the basement subject to a flood.
So servers are still going to be physically located in this building?
Right.
Unless something were to happen, and then they would go for the AWS, they would be uploaded to a cloud-type service.
Right.
And this firmware, is that what you said, is the, is the, is the device we have implemented to protect us, you know, along with the subnetting, so that we can essentially shut down a department if a department becomes infected? You know, these are the things that are in place to protect security breaches, because, you know, we live in an age of security breaches, and as soon as the, the information leaves the physical plant of the town, you know, I think that's when we expose ourselves on an entirely different level for security breaches. So, you know, there's the, kind of the internal security, when the information is held internally, and then there's a whole different set of concerns once it's sent out. You know, for example, if we were to have a security breach in the town system, you said that when the system fails, it would then go to another place, a cloud-type service, correct?
Correct.
So let's assume the system were to shut down because of a security breach. Would a similar or the same security breach be able to access the information where it is in its new place?
That's not, that's a good question that I don't know if I have the exact answer to yet, but that's not what's envisioned with the $30,000 disaster recovery. It's a disaster recovery solution, more contemplating things like a fire, a flood, a hurricane, or vandalism.
I thought you were, I understood that the flood was a portion of it, but I thought it looked at disaster in a bigger picture as, you know, a loss of information or data or some kind of a security breach.
No, no, more along the lines of those two host machines get destroyed, and we need to continue business.
Thinking too holistically.
I don't have any questions. I, I think that what, what I like about the presentation is that with this flood disaster that we had, you're taking this opportunity to ensure to the best degree possible that it won't happen again and have a backup system and get it off this basement floor. I think, I imagine the insurance company's supporting that.
And, well, they required it.
And required, and indeed probably required, yeah.
They weren't going to give us money to do the exact same thing over again and pay us again on a future claim, so.
So, so we got an upgrade there, and we've learned something, and we've taken measures to, to secure the information system.
Right.
So I think that's good. And I think notwithstanding the percentage increase to 13, that the gross dollar amount is not an awful lot of money.
Depends on whose money it is.
Well, I see where money goes sometimes, Norm. You can have a smaller percent of a bigger number, and it can be, have a lot more money in some impact.
All right. Mark?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Rich, thanks for the presentation. I was a little bit confused when I actually saw the way this was laid out. When I saw municipal operations department, I thought we were going to be looking at municipal operations. Are we, are we changing what we used to call IT, or what we used to call municipal technical services, that we now have a new name? Is that we call municipal operations?
I understood it to be the municipal operations department.
Okay. I'm just trying to check, check on that, because I know in the past, we largely focused on this department, looked at it as an IT department.
I think, and Mr. Chairman, through, through the chairman to administrator, I don't recall the exact vote, but there was a vote a couple of years ago to make this change.
Yeah, so I memorialized that in a memo, and that was in the fall of 2017. So typically to shorten the term of the department. IT was a standalone operation before, and as I addressed in my January 10, 2019 memo, what we tried to do based on about, at that time, about nine months worth of evaluation of town operations, was to try to align critical facets of what the town needed to get done that were, in the past, parceled out amongst different persons. And there wasn't really a model like this across the state that we looked, so we created it. And because purchasing is pretty much the central thing, is that what it is that we do, and also integration and modernization of IT, at the time, it made sense to align this way, and then further integration with energy made sense. And so I think what's happened across the nomenclature is people just drop technical and they call it municipal operations, when in reality, it is the specific things I addressed in the memo, procurement, energy, special projects, and IT has a role to play there.
Okay. No, I'm just, I'm just trying to, there is a little, from my perspective, there's a little bit of confusion since we've been calling it municipal technical services. So seeing it now called municipal operations, I think, it shouldn't surprise people if it's confusing, that's all. So I think going forward, are we looking at just sticking with the municipal operations department? Is that what we're going to call this, going forward?
So, yeah. And I believe that's how it was in the, perhaps in the town warrant last year?
Okay, I'm just, like I said, it's, we've been calling it different things. I think the more we keep it the same, I think the better off. We are, the other question that I have, it has to deal with just the communication side of it. Where, and maybe this is a broader question, maybe this is not to you, but to the administration on that, is where do we look at making improvements with the overall programming involving the television station, you know? We really don't have any programming. Our communications infrastructure is sort of in need of improvement. So, you know, where does that factor in in terms of move, moving forward? What's the game plan there?
If I might, Rich, before you start. In the memorandum that I sent to you on January 10, it addresses how that aspect, which has been, what I would say, brought up, and been really kind of a focus internally of how is it we take what we've been presently doing and bring it to the desire line where we all want to go? And actually, even tonight, as recently as the town meeting presentation, an integral part of that communication strategy is multimedia platform. So the last page of what I sent to you in that memo, within Rich's domain, is website and media-related activities that he's been working on to modernize our effort and kind of play catch-up to some of the other, what I'd call more state-of-the-art towns, including YouTube channeling, better capabilities with cameras, I think, and he can talk specifically about this, but some what's referred to as self-service camera attachment, so we can live-wire a conference room for multimedia activities. And so we're pretty excited about that. I think it's fair to say the town probably got caught a little bit behind the eight ball on the 21st century communication, but we're trying really fast, that Rich's leadership, along with Chris and the team, to try to bring us up to a better communicating platform.
One of the things we have in place now, we started this, we've been doing this for procurement for, you know, about six months, or maybe longer than six months. I think it predated me, and then I continued on with procurement, but I instituted it for website and media. And that's a working group of multi-town departments to come in and meet periodically. Some of them are talking sessions, and how can we do things better? How do we make a process? But some of them are also going to be working sessions to actually provide content and update information. So practically, that's really where the rubber's going to meet the road. We do have a contract we're executing to do a website redesign, so that'll be happening. And we have an upcoming 2021 expiration of our Comcast agreement, which I'm working with the Cape Media Center to coordinate with four other towns to negotiate that. And there's a lot going on with federal regulations over that. All that being said, all the wastewater, Water Resources Advisory Committee meetings have been streamed via YouTube with a laptop, in lieu of-
That's great.
-better technology. So we're making do with what we can. We've also assigned a staff person within the IT shop to take responsibility to coordinate website updates and content efforts. So we're getting better.
That's good. That's good. I bring it up. I mean, I read the memo, but I think it's important to have at least more public awareness. I mean, I certainly make it a priority. It's always been a pet issue of mine, because I'm very concerned about how we communicate to the community at large, all the, all the good things that are going on here in Yarmouth Town Hall and in the community. You know, the concern that I've heard is, is the lack of knowledge and awareness of what's going on here in Town Hall. And there's a lot of good stuff going on, so. Do you expect to see any substantial improvements in the website in the coming year, or in the Channel 18 channel? Are we going to see more government program, do you think?
Yes to both. Like I said, we're looking at executing a contract for the website redesign in the next, you know, any time now, and so-
I think that's terrific news.
So that's something that'll be happening in the next several months, and we'll reinstitute our efforts. At that time, it's a good opportunity to bring everybody in, get them acclimated to what we're using, how to use it, provide the training, and continue this working group that we've set up to make sure that stays current and up to date. And then the second thing is, yeah, I've worked with Terry over at the Cape Media Center to get a relationship going with them. I'm actually going to meet him next week, and we've talked about various elements of community program, programming that other communities have done that perhaps we could do here, and he's going to help us with that. And then through my work with the Water Resource Advisory Committee, I don't want to talk out of school, because I haven't talked to them yet, but today I worked on a series of little short snippets that we're going to probably be able to do ourselves in-house to talk about our wastewater efforts, and post those on Facebook and YouTube and on the website. So, yeah, we're moving forward on all those things. We've got a lot on our plate, so sometimes the progress is very incremental, but we're always trying to move the bus forward.
Yeah. With respect to the other items that you presented to us earlier, I applaud you for trying to be creative and efficient and figuring out ways to address all of these other issues. I know you've briefed me on some of this stuff before, and I know I think it's, it's all well-done. It's very, very good. I think, I think these are all very laudable initiatives, and we're doing it the smart way, so I appreciate all that.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just follow up on one critical piece of the multimedia strategy. What we'll probably do in the, probably in the coming months to give you an update as to the, as we enter into the Comcast negotiation situation, we were put on notice by Comcast back in early December, I think, that we were in this period of informal negotiation period in which we can engage them. The interesting thing about PPEG, which is referred to as Public Educational Government TV Programming, which is paid for by franchise fees off of TV programming, under the proposal that is in front of the FCC now, there would be like a chargeback to this. So the cable companies are looking to put their fingers into that to say, "What's the value of that?" And if they can determine what that is, you know, essentially it'd be kind of, you'd be taking a franchise fee, and then you'd be paying back to these for that. So I think what, not to display all the cards, but I think it's fair to say that with modern media that is available today, one of the things that is being looked at is, you know, what kind of media communication equipment can we utilize to counteract that? It's not lost on the cable TV companies. It's streaming TV programming through streaming services like Hulu and Netflix is killing regular programming, advertising, and there's communities, particularly Massachusetts, just cutting loose their franchisee and leaving them high and dry. So it's going to get really complicated in the near future on this, and we want to make sure that whatever it is that we prepare to build, we build it, namely, so that we can continue to communicate in the best fashion possible. But it is probably fair to say that the traditional norm for, and Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, for like the last 40 years, is probably going to go by the wayside with a public educational program.
Yeah, I think one of the things, I just add on to that, Mr. Chairman, is that you should, there is a proposed rule by the FCC that could require some of the services that are provided by Comcast at a discount, could be charged and charged against the Comcast revenue that we get from, from them. So it could, it could throw a monkey wrench, and to the extent that we want to improve government programming and improve other programming and do other things with some of that Comcast money to improve our IT infrastructure, the way the FCC is going is they have a proposed rule that could undermine and cut back a significant amount of funding. So there's an effort going on sort of nationally to try to, to try to change that. So I recognize that it's great to keep making this progress, but there, there are some potential threats on the horizon that are out of our control, but that could cause some jeopardy to this budget. So I know, I know Dan and the rest of the team are keeping an eye on that stuff, and we may very well have to adjust accordingly. But I think the investments that you're making in these other approaches, I think, are thinking of, very forward-thinking in terms of how we deal with those kinds of problems, so.
My last closing comment would be, I guess what I'd like to say is that what we're doing with this budget, you know, with the budget we have now and with this budget, is to build capacity within our staff to do what we need to do. I like to think that we're kind of like a force multiplier. We make every, we can make everybody else better if we're doing it right. And so an example of that is agreeing communities. I've got 30-plus projects. I'm going to have a meeting tomorrow, and I'm going to get a lot of those done on our first round of grants in the next several months. So that's a good example. Been working with the Fire Department on a lot of things, and a lot of their EMS and dispatching softwares and upgrades, and that's a good example. So a lot of good things, a lot of good benefits come from this, and I'm very cognizant of the, of being cost-effective and cost-conscious, so I don't submit any additions or changes lightly without having thought it through, so.
I do have a couple of questions, clarifications, and you talked about the servers that existed previously, and I don't know, there was some number in the high teens of servers that were located-
Thirty-two.
How many?
Thirty-two.
And were those located all around, or were they centralized in, in one particular area?
Those were all around.
So it was pretty much a decentralized system?
Many of them were here, but-
Okay.
There's a handful over at the police, a couple over at Fire.
So that's all, coming back to the host machines?
So that's all, is coming back to the host machines that you talked about?
Public safety is out of our virtualization project.
Okay.
This first round are focusing on Town Hall and everything here. In a future phase, that might be a consideration. But given the layout of our infrastructure, it didn't lend itself to doing those at this time, so we have to see how that evolves a little bit. But basically, servers here at Town Hall, with some exception, are going to be virtualized.
Okay. And then, so the functions that are still out with remote servers, are those coming under a review as well in terms of redundancy?
As we get through this phase, we'll look at what we can do with the public safety servers, if we can improve the operation relating to how those work, yes.
Okay. Most people, I think, at Town that have contact, the residents at least, with, with the Town on taxes and paying and, and getting permits and that sort of thing. I've forgotten the name of the service that we're using.
We use a couple, but Acela is one.
I-City?
What was it?
I-City or?
City Hall Systems is another.
Okay. What is our level of review of their security with the data that is transmitted to them from, from our citizens?
That's a good question, and it's part of, one of the questions I have that will be part of our security review. So we need to be, at a minimum, asking to make sure they've met certain standards. And so that'll be one of the things I'll be looking for.
They certainly have a lot of data out there. They've got people's, or may have people's credit card information. They may have checking account information, you know, so a lot of information.
I thought I heard, I figured you'd walk up behind me because I know he's done-
Insurance vendors are PCI compliant, compliant. Payment card integration compliant.
Okay.
Which means that they fall under stringent rules as it relates to how they handle anybody's financial information. So that was part of the review we had when we brought in Acela and we brought in City Hall Systems.
Do they provide us with insurance or some sort of financial backup to?
They are liable because we don't have that data. So, and we also have cyber insurance that was just taken out for this fiscal year as well, so that if there are any attacks and we are financially impacted by those attacks, that insurance will allow us to recover money.
Well, specific to that, if, let's say that they have a breach of their data-
Right.
And, and all of our citizens, whether it's bank account numbers, whatever data they have available to them is lost. Does the Town step in and deal with them? Or is it individual citizens that then have to follow through?
We would obviously advocate for our citizens, but they're the ones that are liable.
Well, I mean, the typical approach in, you know, with, with some of these companies, whether it's credit card companies or whatever, is that they will, if your data is lost, they'll at least provide you with, you know, a credit service or some, some sort of service to monitor what's going on with your credit cards and credit line and all that sort of thing. And, and, you know, I would hope that we'd be in a position to require that of any company that does have our taxpayers' data.
Right. But what we have to do is not do this in-house. Because of the obligations and the liability and the sophistication and managing the software and the services, you know, that's something that we need to utilize a third party to do that is, you know, a well-established. And even those folks, they work with credit card vendors behind them. So they're not even touching the credit cards. It's, in the case of City Hall Systems, it's Heartland. In the case of Acela, it's Invoice Cloud. So even though software packages don't want to have any information related to somebody's credit card information. So just a few companies that are, again, payment card integration compliant, manage those types of transactions.
And that is part of our, so I mentioned the security audit we wanted to do. One of the other assessments we wanted to do is a PCI compliance assessment that's going to be required under some new regulations. That's, again, something that our BCIO, that's here on a routine basis, will be able to instruct us how to do and will be able to complete for us as well.
Okay. The other part of this is, you know, some of the things we didn't talk about are fleet management and energy management. And I know there are initiatives to, to save money in those areas that, but that isn't reflected in these budget changes. And, you know, I'm wondering, what's the offset? You know, because there are savings being generated in those areas.
Well, the offset would be the energy budget once we have these projects completed and implemented, and so.
I mean, you've made presentations on that already, so.
So it's a matter of during FY '20, we will have those completed. And so, you know, if, as long as those are completed and we realize those savings, all else being equal, then you would expect that those budgets would go down if the rate of, you know, electricity stayed the same and the usage of everything else stayed the same.
And the, I guess the other-
On the fleet management, that would be on a fuel usage. So actually, today I reviewed some electric vehicle, hybrid electric vehicle, potential candidates. For, and in this case, probably a lease. So going through and looking at those arrangements, what those lease arrangements and requirements would be. And then I'm going to cost out what's the total cost of ownership to do that program over a five-to-10-year period versus an ownership model. So I think that'll show favorably that it will cost us less to do what we might suggest we were going to do. However, that probably is going to cost us more than what we're doing now, which is taking old vehicles and holding on to them for 20 years. But if we can forego some of the maintenance that we know we need to do on these vehicles and, and have less maintenance going forward because we have newer vehicles and are replacing them on a routine schedule, again, that would be something you'd see reduction in departmental budgets related to maintenance and repair.
Okay. The other, coming back to the servers versus the host machines, is there a capital, what's the capital impact of those two programs?
So that was part of my capital budget projection. So I had suggested a, I think, believe it was a $50,000 annual replacement for servers and network-based equipment annually, as opposed to, I need $30,000 this year for this one and $18,000 the next year for the next. I surveyed what we're going to have after this virtualization project and what's the replacement cost over an average five-year life. And I wanted to have the opportunity to have the funds on hand to replace those, not necessarily evenly over the five years, but more strategically. If I can get another year out of server, we're going to get another year out of a server and we'll use it for another need, or we won't use it and it would revert back. But as long as I know I've got that money coming up in a future year, then we're able to do that.
Okay. Was there a projection of what the, under the old program, what the multiple servers were going to cost us? Replacement versus what the program is now that you're envisioning?
There was with the capital budget, and I apologize, I didn't bring that as part of this presentation, but yeah, there was. And it was a small to moderate savings on a, on a routine replacement basis.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate the thorough presentation. And I don't think we need a board motion unless the board would be more comfortable with that at this stage.
No, you'll have an opportunity during a budget hearing to take your vote, so.
Okay. All right. Okay. Thank you very much, Rich.
Thank you. Switched chairs.
Okay, well, I guess the next item also involves you in one way or another. And so, Dan, did you want to talk about the municipal operations?
Yeah. So the evolution, thank you, Mr. Chairman, of the department started with Sean McGinnis, who was the inaugural director of the department. And that appointment, when Sean left in, of last year, it left an opening of the position we looked at, an opportunity, and we needed somebody right away. We were in the middle of the whole flood scenario situation, trying to get recovery started in Green Communities. There was a lot to manage. And Rich's financial background, a lot of what we currently kept coming to the fore was how much of these activities were financial in nature, including some of the massive public works projects on the horizon. So Rich had indicated a desire to take on the challenge. We probably couldn't come into the department at a worse time from a situation where like it's sometimes easier to come into something when it's nicely all set, ready to go. But Rich took on the challenge, and there was a lot of interaction with the insurance carriers, just that aspect of it alone, the IT having been part of that process was, was massive to, I mean, the loss on their end of it was a half a million dollars. That's not really short money. And so to negotiate the way through that, I gave Rich a lot of credit. So I watched him perform in the project. He had also, as Town Accountant, had been very integral in standardizing our procurement effort in the past. We had had a number of challenges identified early on in my tenure in which procurement was going on kind of unbeknownst to other departments, and our aggregated total was eclipsing thresholds that we shouldn't be eclipsing according to 30B. And some procurements we knew in the future were going to be incredibly complicated, and Rich took it upon himself to put a working group together, start a training effort, standardize the procedure. And I think it kind of culminated in last week's presentation with the Gulf RFP. That was a very complicated, complicated document, and we couldn't have been able to get it to where it is in Massachusetts form without Rich's assistance. So I, I addressed the memo to you back on January 10th requesting that you appoint Rich to the position, full-time, permanent position as a department head. I will say that a number of things, I think, came up along the way. One is the charter is silent, and I know this is something that Mr. Forrest will comment on. Silent on what happens when we have these vacancies in midterm, and it's probably something I think we can address. I went back and forth with legal counsel. We certainly can do something as an interim step on that such that if the board so desires in the future on these acting appointments of these department heads, they could have a policy in place in which a certain period of time after the initial appointment, maybe 60 days, it goes in front of the board. And then we could follow that up with a charter change 10 years from now, but we'd remember it because it would be a future board policy. And then the other issue is, as we were going through charter change requests this past year, the idea that we could have a candidate come within to the organization that clearly has demonstrated a certain proficiency and somebody we really value. A lot of times in the, we lose people in municipal employment because we're not nimble enough necessarily to provide work opportunities. So we changed the charter, went through Town Meeting to allow you to waive the condition of putting three names in front of you. We did, in the case of Mr. McGinnis, we did a reorganization. Town Council opined at that time that you could, as part of that reorganization, make a sweeping change and appoint that person. And you'll remember with Community Services, we actually followed the charter in that case because it wasn't necessarily a reorganization of the same kind. And we, we did the selection criteria with three names. So in this particular case, the provisions in the charter, it's waiting to get acted on by the legislature. There had been precedent in the past with other department heads in which you've done it this way. So I wanted to get Mr. Bienvenue a full-time appointment, but also I'm mindful of the challenges Mr. Sentio has as his department related to. We can't really move on the Town Accountant's position until we resolve this situation. And I know Ed has been working yeoman's effort with all that's in front of him, kind of. We've had a great substitute Town Accountant in Ruth Lewis. She's done the fantastic job. But it's time now to, to get going with some permanency here in the town administration.
Okay. Mark, do you want to lead off?
Yeah. First of all, let me just say that I have nothing but incredible respect for the work that Rich does for the Town of Yarmouth. I am one of your biggest fans, and you have a lot of fans on Cape Cod and elsewhere. My concerns have solely to deal with the charter, Mr. Chairman. Dan, as Danwell knows, I've, I've been very concerned about the, under the charter, it's the Board of Selectmen that make decisions on department heads. And I'm not a lawyer, but I'll leave that to others who are. But I believe it's the select board that makes a call on interim or acting department heads. It's, there's no, there's no qualification on the board or a limitation in terms of the board's power. We are the executive authority under the charter, and it's our job to make those appointments. So when, when Dan had presented this to me, I raised that question because I, as much as I'm support, I was, I would be supportive, my suggestion would be just to make the recommendation to the board to appoint Rich as, as acting, and I think that's something that would be pretty well-received. But unless that happened, I would have, I had an issue, and I've been looking for some legal clarity that our town administrator has the authority to make acting appointments with respect to department heads. Under our charter, the department head appointment is ours as a board. That's our responsibility. And I think we have to be very careful if we give up our responsibility or cede our authority. So I've been very open and honest about that. And then my other question with respect to this decision has to deal with waiving the three candidate rule because I think, as we told the voters at Town Meeting, that this was a charter change that required the approval of the legislature, which has yet to happen. So I believe the three candidate rule still stands. So those are my questions, so I really can't support this until those questions are addressed. But I'd be more than happy to endorse Rich or, you know, once again, for his position. I do think the board has to make the appointment of the acting director of Technical Services. Those are my concerns, and I've been very open with Rich about this. I've been open with Dan about it. And so I just feel it's not an issue of the candidate. I think it's an outstanding, he does outstanding work for the Town. I just don't believe I can support this request because I don't believe it's compliant or consistent with the Town Charter. And I would love to get a legal opinion that might suggest that I'm wrong, but until I have that, I can't support this. So those are my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Dan, you have any thoughts just in?
Yeah, I mean, I had quite a bit of dialogue, and I sent in, I believe, a number of opinions from Tallaman's office. Kate Federoff, was it, related to the appointments of Sean McGinnis and Pat Armstrong on this particular scenario. So one way it was explained to me was in the absence of, so the charter deals with the appointment of full-time. It doesn't mention the word "acting." So in the absence of that, the Administrative Appointing Authority in this particular case and statute talks about these interim appointments. And to Mark's point, I suppose that, as it was explained to me by Kate, it could go either way if you wanted to put Rich in front, but she was, certainly it seemed to be comfortable that on the acting role that the statute that allows for acting appointments is, was in your domain, and that was okay. I, you know, the longstanding tradition, as it was explained to me, was if it isn't explicitly stated in the charter, then the administration would make those calls. So it was kind of like you don't have these circumstances occur on, you know, on a regular basis. But I would say to Mr. Forrest's point about waiving the appointment, there's been a number of department heads who have appeared before you and been appointed without doing the three-person search, for whatever reason you want to call it. Mr. Grills comes to mind, Mr. Simonian comes to mind, Mrs. Green comes to mind, Mr. McGinnis comes to mind. And in my time here, we just put Ms. Armstrong through that. So I felt that there was enough pathway and past practice that the board, that if you were so comfortable to make that appointment, that certainly it was well within your purveyance. I do understand, you know, Town Meeting, we had an interesting, we've had an interesting conversation about the role of Town Meeting with the statute. Certainly, I don't anticipate a hang-up up in Boston, but I believe that, I guess respectfully to Mr. Forrest's opinion, Town Meeting took a vote to change our charter, and it's at this point kind of a formality. And, you know, I don't necessarily think because Town Meeting took the vote, and it may take the legislature two years to get to enacting something that effectively on the ground dictates on an everyday basis. something that effectively on the ground dictates on an everyday basis what it is that we do, that that should be something that we would hang up on. Ultimately, though, to Mr. Forrest's point, it is your decision. And so certainly, I'm just looking forward to, I've seen enough of Mr. Bienvenue's performance. There's been past practice in this history. And I also am mindful that we're a little short-staffed in the accounting department. So I thought there was enough there to stand on to put him in front of you at this point.
Mike?
This is a very difficult question to address because I have, like Mark, the highest respect for Rich and the work that he does. And I don't want him to misconstrue any of my comments that I have any personal problems with you applying for this position or your qualifications to assume this position. I think that Mark has a point insofar as the action under the charter that allows us to waive the three-person requirement, which I acknowledge has been waived before. But that's the question of should it have been waived before? It's a different matter. My understanding is, and I'm not an expert on this issue, but my understanding is it's effective when it's approved by the legislature. And so it, and to my knowledge, it hasn't been yet. It generally would take probably a year or so for that to occur. With respect to the acting appointment, acting department heads issue, that's really a murkier question. And I don't think the charter addresses that one way or the other. However, and I think we probably should try to seek a very thorough opinion on that from town council, not so much with respect to this appointment, but going forward in terms of all our appointments. It would seem to me, and again, I can't back this up with a case or anything like that, but it would seem to me that if the board has the authority, the sole authority to appoint department heads, permanent department heads, it would seem to me that included in that power or authority is the authority to appoint temporary department heads. But again, it may be a situation where there's not going to be any legal authority, just like other issues that we were grappling with at the time. Some legal questions have all kinds of delineation through case law and some have none. So I don't really know where we stand on that. But I, you know, I can only speak for myself. I think as a selectman, one of my duties and responsibilities is to uphold the charter that people have voted in as the governing document for us to conduct town business under. And again, Rich, I hope you understand where I'm going. This is absolutely nothing to do with your, I would say this no matter who is being appointed for whatever position. I think it's a, it's a point of clarification that I would have to have to proceed on appointing a permanent department head at this point in time.
So, Mike, are you saying that the question really is the fact that it hasn't been approved by the legislature?
I think in terms of the waiver, yeah. And again, you could say we, I know we waived it before because I remember with the fire chief we did.
Yeah.
But then the question is, because we did something before, and I don't know, but assume we're in error, does that mean we have to perpetuate that error?
So it doesn't become effective until regardless?
Until the legis-
Even though it's-
Legally, I think it becomes effective when it's approved by the legislature, yes, because I think that's how the charter operates. But again, going along with Mark, I don't want to hold up Rich's performance of his job duties. And I'd be willing to appoint him as a temporary at this point.
As would I. The other thing, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, just one other point. If we apply a certain principle with this position, then it's going to, it should apply to all positions. So if we don't believe our authority, the authority's there for the town administrator with respect to acting department heads. Thank God forbid if something were to happen to Chief Frederickson. That's our, that should be the board's call as to an acting police chief.
But there's-
Can I just finish, please? If we, if we, something, God forbid, were to happen with respect to the fire chief, I think the appointment of an acting should be this board's decision. I think in the past, I think there are instances where you have appointed as a board acting department heads. It's been your call. So like I said, I'm perplexed by all this. I need a legal opinion that tells me that these two points that I've raised are not an issue. And then if that can be demonstrated by town council, then I will admit that I'm wrong, that my interpretation of the charter is incorrect. And I'd be willing to hear what council has to say. But unless there's some legal clarity, I'm, I don't, I can't support it. So. But there's a precedent here that I'm very concerned about as well.
Are you finished?
Yes.
Well, I wish Bob Lawton was here because it's my recollection, I believe, then in times, or even Bill Hinchey, that he's appointed himself while he's not been around people to act on his behalf. Am I, am I wrong about that? There's been times where we've had, I think the police and fire are different because they have statutory obligations to be sure that if they are not able to act in a situation, that somebody's actually appointed. I think that these positions are a little bit different, whereas there's no like emergency or statutory authority that they have with the law in terms of acting. But I know Bob, I know, I, I'm almost positive that acting has been consistently appointed by town administration.
Yeah. Well, in my, in my discussions with Bob, he has told me differently.
We did it with Bill. But the only time we did it with Bill that I can recall is when he went on vacation. He appointed, he asked us to appoint Peter acting.
Did we appoint him or did he?
No, we did.
Who did?
I think we did.
We did?
He asked. I think he asked.
He asked us to, and we did. And so that Peter, in Bill's absence, Peter would hold full-time administrative authority.
If I can also add to your point, Eric, when Georgia Lear passed away, Bill presented, I believe, to the board and a candidate for an acting or an interim, and I think that was Rob. And he, that appointment was approved by the board as an acting. Yes. That's what my research does. Right, Robby?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So, I don't want to interrupt you.
Yeah, go ahead.
That doesn't, so I agree with the legislature part. I think that alone, no reflection on you, Rich, but that alone concerns me enough that I don't think, while it's probably a done deal, that we should necessarily, we have never implemented or acted on any town meeting action that has required legislative approval. We've never acted on those things prior to receiving the legislative approval, I don't think. So, you know, I don't think that that's something we should deviate from. You know, there are certainly instances where three candidates were not put before us. And that's a question I can't answer tonight. But, you know, I agree that we have done in the past. And I never would have given it any thought unless you all had brought it up. And I'll have, I'm going to go back and read the charter again tomorrow. Sounds like it might not be clear. But Mark, you think, do you think it's clear that it is, it's incumbent upon this board to, or is the town administrator supposed to present three candidates to us and we are supposed to?
Yes.
Under the charter, yes. And I also believe it's this board's responsibility. It's our responsibility to make decisions on department heads.
Do you remember when we had the town accountant's position and we had the three candidates and we interviewed them and they didn't interview as well as they interviewed with Bill and Peter?
Right.
And we didn't, we didn't appoint any of them.
Right.
And then we ended up getting Rich.
Yeah. It worked out well.
That's what happened.
Yeah, Ed, we got Ed.
We got Ed.
No, we split, we split the position and Ed was the kind of the consolation prize, I think.
Oh, nice.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Rich as acting municipal operations director.
Well, that's the other thing is he's referred to in different ways. So we're going to have to get clear on that at some point.
The actual title is on my memo, the Municipal Technical Operations Director. That is the name of the department.
The NTO.
So I will second that.
So, discussion? So what's next?
Well, so-
Well, we're just trying to clarify one issue.
Yeah, so what I'll do is-
Well, I want to know what the process is before I vote on a-
So what I'll do is, I did run this memo through council and it didn't raise any red flags in this process. And as I said before, we had memorandum from Kate Federoff from council's office on the temporary hiring authority that's governed by a different state statute. And so what I'll do is, I'll take this for tonight. That would be great just to empower this. I think there's further discussion because the charter is silent on this idea of acting. And there is a state statute that it talks about interim appointments and whatnot. That we'll get some clarity on that. And then if it has to be kind of like a board vote for a policy going forward, that's fine. We can certainly do that. But in the meantime, as it relates to this permanency position, I'll get definitive clarity from council, town council, as it relates to going forward with this position. I, like I said, I, having gone through everybody's file that had gone through this appointment process before, a couple of things stood out. One is this has been done in the past with a number of folks. And as it was explained to me by past practice with one administrator was, this is if it's the charter doesn't specifically address it, then it's administrator's domain and call. So, but it's good to get clarity going forward in the future. You never know when you might have a problem. So.
As far as, I just want to make one comment more in nature of a question. In terms of past practice, that's usually a, something that comes up in a context of collective bargaining.
Understood.
If the agreement doesn't specify, you look to see what happened in the past. But I've never really heard that concept applied to the Board of Selectmen and what powers they have.
Except for the fact that it does give, you know, like some guidance as to decision-making.
Suppose the Board of Selectmen, though hypothetically, was wrong all the times they did that, you know? I mean, it could be, that could be the case, too.
Mark, do you disagree that the charter is silent?
No, I think it's clear. I think this board has the responsibility to act on department heads. I'm a town administrator. In the charter that I, or the bylaws, I'm the acting administrator. But in the bylaws that are there, it's very clear that I'm responsible for making decisions on department heads.
I read-
Virtually every department, with the exception of two or three. And that includes acting as well.
I had a conversation with Mark about it. And I read and reread and searched through the charter for other provisions. And what I'd found is that it's our responsibility. And it's, it requires three people, three candidates to be presented to us for a vote. But, you know, the sense certainly I get from the board is, you know, we're more comfortable moving forward with the board authorizing and voting on acting positions of this nature as well as the permanent positions of this nature based on the charter. And that regardless of what has happened in the past, I think, I think we're comfortable with that. The difficulty that I see with the acting positions is if it's not part of what the board does, then we've got a person who's put in a very difficult position. Both the employee is put in a position, and I think our board is put in a difficult position. Because if an acting director is appointed at the town administrator's decision level, then it's difficult for the board at a later point to say, okay, now we need three candidates. We put that employee in a, in a, in a poor position. And it makes us feel like, geez, we've got a person already. What do we do? How do we, you know, we're forced into an apology that, you know, we don't really want to deliver. And, you know, I just, I think we need to be consistent, both at the acting level and at the permanent level for that position. And I think I'm sensing that our board is comfortable with that. And I'm not sure, you know, yeah, we can waive a three, the three candidate rule. But I think we've got to do that at some point. You know, if we felt, if we feel that we've got a candidate for acting position, I think probably as a board, we've got to feel pretty confident that that person will be able to succeed or go into the full-time role at some future point.
Kind of similar to that, Mr. Chairman. I disagree respectfully. I think, I think your charter is pretty much laid out. I think if you want to change that, if you feel there's this, in your sense, a certain awkwardness, I think that's something that you put before the next town meeting as a charter change. Or you already have the waiver provision of the three candidate. It's already going to the legislature. It may not take that long.
No, I understand that. What I'm saying is that for the board to appoint acting directors, doing that without thinking clearly about how, what is that person's future with the organization? Is it, is it more likely than not that that person will become the full-time director? If not, what happens and, you know, you've got to think through what happens to that person if you decide to go out to interview. You've got to-
Right. Let me, let me add to that.
Yeah.
Give you something else to be thinking about. From a perception point of view, think of all of the other people that work in the town and they read the charter and the charter says-
Absolutely.
Three candidates. And then all of a sudden, they're foreclosed from the opportunity for competing. All right? We did this with one department head. We told one department head that there had to be competition. And we went through the process with one department. How do others look at our decision-making if we impose it on one person, but then we don't impose it on others? Some could look at that and think that maybe we're acting in a pattern that's discriminatory. So I think the optics of what we're doing are very, very important in terms of the message that we send to employees in this town. Do we want them to think that there are some favored inside candidates for jobs and there are others that aren't? I think we need, we owe it to the people that work here. We've got a lot of talented people here in Yarmouth. And I think it's important for them to know that the rules apply to everybody and not apply just to some who we may think they shouldn't apply to. So I just think these are the kinds of things that we need to be thinking about as we wrestle with this question. I certainly felt that, from the feedback that I got in the community, that when we went through this the last time after the reorganization, that there was one person singled out for having to go through this process, but it wasn't necessarily set up for the other. All right? So we've already sort of sent the message. Now, I don't know how others interpret that. I've heard other interpretations. But I think this is where consistency is very, very important because we don't want to convey the message to the people working in this town, that they don't have a fair shot at the job if the rules are laid out the way the rules are laid out in the charter. And I think it's difficult for us to sort of ignore the rules, and in this case, the three candidate requirement until the legislature acts. We told, we went to town meeting, we made it very clear that these are the charter changes that ought to be made, subject to approval by the legislature. And I would agree with Dan. I think these are relatively routine things. But I think, I don't like even going to town meeting and telling people one thing and then doing another. I mean, we, you know, this, this is, I just, I know I'm the new guy on the block. I'm the new member of the board. But this is a new issue for me. And I just think it's important for me to speak openly and honestly about the way I, the way I think this thing should be handled. So that's, that's really all I can say. But I wish you would at least, Mr. Chairman, as you're wrestling with this question, also keep those optics in mind as well. Thank you.
Yeah, I do. I understand the situation. I, you know, I think it's, you know, we're kind of caught in the middle with some timing issues here that as a result of the town meeting action last year and the timing at the legislature. And so, but, all right.
I just want to say one thing about that with Mark because, you know, I had the same exact feelings. I think when Bill left and Peter stepped up, he put a team together for acting. And even that to me, and it was no disrespect again to anybody who was there. But we have a lot of qualified people who try to move up and don't get the opportunity. And even at that time, I said, well, why don't we put it out to see who's interested? Maybe you're going to find somebody- Maybe you're going to find somebody who, and, you know, that, it didn't happen, but I feel exactly the same way. But the point is, that I'm trying to make is, do you do the same process for acting as you do for, you know, it gets, it gets a little crazy, but with Chief Simonian, you know, I think it was a great opportunity. He was acting before he came back in six months to, before we made that decision whether or not we were going to waive it or not. So I think, as the same where it could be a difficult position, it's a good opportunity, really, you know, and Rich is already doing it, so it's a different scenario in this case, but sometimes that acting is a very, very good opportunity to see whether or not the person has it or not, so.
I would agree.
I think you have to weigh and balance all those things. It's not a cut-and-dry issue. You're right, Tracy, you do have an opportunity to look at that person in that position. Sometimes you have a compelling need to fulfill that position, like we did when we appointed the fire chief, and I got to be careful about what I say, because a lot of things that, that surrounded that change are a matter of confidentiality. But, on the other hand, Mark, I think Mark's got a fair point, too, and that is public perception, it's the perception of employees in the town, you know, whether they're going to get a fair shot when position's open, if it's going to be a, it's a balancing act, really, and I think one of the things we have to do as a board is look at what the needs of the town are, and to see if that candidate has unique qualifications that we need. And then, also, you know, if, if we're not satisfied that that is a pressing appointment, then look to the considerations that Mark raises about the fairness and the openness of the, of the competitive process to fill that position.
Hmm. Yeah. And, you know, I guess I hark back to my days in business, and, in the organization that I last worked for, for 20 years or so, we never had anybody, we had a lot of positions, a lot of sales managers, division managers, and we never appointed anyone acting. They either were, or they weren't. And if we weren't happy with, let's say that there was an assistant, just pick a, a named sales manager, if we weren't happy with that person's capabilities, then, then we found a way to interview for a number of candidates. And, you know, just simply, we didn't do that, because it put the organization in a very difficult, and it put the individual in a very difficult position. We had, we would have had a highly qualified position that was, or a person who was respected and put into a, quote-unquote, temporary position, and I just, you know, and we didn't believe, and, you know, and I still have the concern about having acting positions, I just, you know, and, you know, we are presently in that situation, so, but, you know, I guess if I had thought a great deal about it, more about it at this stage, I'd probably, from a personal perspective, would not have done that sort of thing again, so. You know, I found the policy that we followed very workable, and it was supported by the employees as well as the management group, so. In any case, so we have a motion in front of us, and, all those in favor? Any further discussion? All right? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay. We'll move on from there.
So it doesn't resolve at long term, but we'll have to revisit it.
It doesn't resolve, it have a, either decide to interview more people, and, or wait for a decision from the legislature, so.
Thank you, Rich.
See you tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, well, let's move on to the next item on our agenda. We have a OSHA presentation.
So I've asked the staff, OSHA liaisons, to give you a presentation with us, is also our latest intern from Mass Maritime, Joe Valenzola. Joe has-
Hey, Joe.
Hit the ground running, he's already been integrated into town operations and is performing some required activities to be done. And what Phil and Roby are going to do is bring you up to speed as to what we've done to date, what's in front of us, there's a couple of budgetary asks that exist mostly in the area of training for additional training for staff, and then there's a free cash request to help to foresee any unknown things at this time that we might have to purchase or get some advice on because of OSHA issues in the workplace, so they'll bring you up to speed on those efforts.
Yes, good evening, Roby Whitehouse, Voice Management Superintendent.
Phil Gardett, Town Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board, for having us here this evening. Dan, thank you for that introduction. As you can see on the panel and in front of you in your presentation, we've provided you with a brief overview of the bill that was signed and the responsibilities moving forward from Chapter 149, Subcheck Section 6 and 1/2, in regards to OSHA regulations for Commonwealth of Massachusetts entities and municipalities. That takes effect on February 1st, 2019, and it's a big ask. We're going to kind of briefly, and try to keep this as short as possible, because we know you have a full agenda tonight, move forward and let you know that the pieces that are referenced on the screen right now are directly from the Division, Department of Labor Standards, and it references who is responsible, or who needs to fall underneath those OSHA regulations. And as you can see, municipalities definitely stand very high on that list. It clarifies that public sector employees are required to provide methods to reduce work-related injuries and illness, which meet the minimum requirements provided by OSHA. Could you move on? So we're lucky enough to have a partner in Maya, and Maya has provided us with the training requirements, as you'll see on Slide Number 3, and that is a large list of training requirements. You'll notice that there's Os and As, and then numbers next to it, and they reference whether or not it's, the training is required for the employee during orientation, whether or not it is required annually, whether it is required every other year, or every two years. And as you can see, the Public Works Division has a lot of numbers next to it, as well as many of the other divisions. Maya has offered to provide us with some training, and that training will be free, and if it takes place here in the town of Yarmouth, we get a couple of extra seats. So, we're looking for Maya to provide us with some training here on Cape Cod, and hopefully branch that out to all of the county, and we have a Fall Protection Training coming up in March, and we're hopeful to fill some seats here in Yarmouth as well. Referenced on this slide is also a note that we applied for a grant in the amount of $10,000, and we were awarded that $10,000. And the articles that were purchased with that $10,000 included PPEs, things like face masks to cover respiratory protection, ear, hearing protection, goggles for impact for those of craftsmen, things like tools to replace some tools in our divisions that had wiring that was faulty, a couple of other protections for backs. There were quite a few items, but unfortunately, $10,000 doesn't go as far as we'd like it to go. Some of these asks were quite large, and in some cases, it, the pile of things doesn't look as big as you would hope it would. So, on the next slide, you see that there is a list of individuals who have volunteered to be part of the town-wide employee safety team. So this is another section of Dan's plan for how we're going to meet the standards of OSHA, and the names that are listed are volunteers and their employees that are part of the Safety Committee, which met first two weeks ago, for the very first time two weeks ago, and they are deciding how their committees are going to be set up. They are working to create a plan, have a chairman, a co-chair, secretary, so that they can plan their meetings accordingly. This safety plan will be in tiers, so we will have a top, I'm not really sure how to describe it, but there will be an administrative team that includes Dan Knappick, Shayna Tyner, Pam Barnes, Phil Gardett, and myself, and then we will have this Employee Committee, which will meet at the employee level, and those employees will go back to their own divisions and meet with their individual and fellow staff members, describe what was talked about at the Safety Committee meeting, and bring that line of communication back and forth between the staff members, the subcommittee, and the administration, to express interests and needs, desires, and also relay that information back from the other direction. So this is, the hope is to have this open line of communication between those groups, and to hopefully change our culture. The feedback after that very first meeting, hearing from a few of the employees who were present, was very positive. They were happy to hear about it. They were happy to hear about Dan's presence there, his representation and his experience. Certainly, 25 years in the safety industry meant a lot to them, they seemed very, very encouraged to hear of the desire to change. I'll let Phil move on to the next screen.
Sure. So the Safety Committee there, they have several goals, but I think the most, or we think the most, or the most important goal is to minimize risk and injuries. And in doing so, we have to comply with federal, state, and environmental regulations, and we have to develop written compliance programs, hazardous chemicals, energy action plans, and control of hazardous energy. In doing so, setting, setting safety and health as a top priority. Implementing a reporting system, you'll find in your packet, as of February 1st, we have to report injuries, and we'll have to post those injuries as one of those requirements. Conducting inspections and stopping work if necessary, that's an important one. Allowing staff to, if they see someone that, they notice something that is unsafe, or like so, that the ability to stop a job, especially in the DPW, if someone's not wearing their, their safety gear when they're out working on a sidewalk, you know, the ability to stop a job is very important, to say, hey, you know, put your safety gear on. Addressing emergencies, just, God forbid if someone were to get injured, or if there was an emergency in place, being able to have the safety cabinet, being able to do that. And then seeking input, the Safety Committee just will be seeking input on workplace changes from staff itself, and improving standards and injury awareness. And in doing so, there's going to be a lot, quite a bit of education and training, so the knowledge and skills needed to do work safely and avoid creating hazards that could place themselves or others at risk. Monthly trainings that are occurring, it's already, it's already happening. Departments, especially departments following under the DPW, will have many, many specific trainings to deal with job hazard compliance, and then as well as office workers themselves in other parts of the town, and the town hall here, admin assistants, principal office assistants, maybe people who are behind a desk all day, there's, there's a lot of, you know, we've got to learn to avoid injuries as well, and ergonomics. And then, on the internships, Mass Maritime has a real robust intern program regarding emergency management, and so introducing right here behind me is Joe Valenzola, and he's insisting, he's assisting us right now, and some of the things that he's doing, and he's really hit the ground running, and he's doing a great job with chemical inventory, emergency action plans, and then if time allows, job hazard analysis, so. Thank you, Joe. And then, in doing all this, we're, we're working towards a culture change, and though there's a long-term cost, it will pay dividends through improved efficiencies, reduced injuries, and improved employee morale. Knowing that everyone is safe and secure is huge. So through that tracking, training, and reporting, and then support from the Yarmouth's leaders with a leading, with leading by example attitude, it's a key piece of the puzzle. And, and I think another big goal is we want every employee to leave the workplace safe and sound. So thank you. Questions?
Were questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, I have questions.
All right.
All right. How much is this going to cost the town of Yarmouth?
Which aspect of it?
The overall program.
It's hard to know at this point, because there is a, an approach that we have that's going to borrow from a lot of different sources, I suppose, if you could, like Maya is, what you see there is a matrix that they developed, and they do provide a training portal.
Does the one, don't mean the matrix we can't read?
Yeah, well, I'll just give some backup, it's actually a very good resource, but there's some training portal that is part of our insured part of this, we'll get training. There may be some that we're going to need from a vended source, but we're looking at relationships that we have with various organizations, including the county, to provide for that, and then some online, and then there's a lot of it that we'll do with our own departments in-house, but if you were to put a dollar value, like kind of broad-based, because there's also potentially, like, for those departments that might have to incur some overtime costs, maybe in the first year, $100 a full-time employee equivalent would be a good starting point. So maybe with 300 employees, that's about $30,000. And then, for all our part-timers, and we had actually an interesting conversation yesterday on FinCom, about this emerging, what I would call, full-time, but part-time employees, that's been kind of like a new trend in labor, particularly out here on the Cape, it's very popular, in which our full-time missions are supported by long-term, part-time employees, that's probably about, maybe half to a third of that number. So we've put in $50,000 free cash article to cover things that we don't know, and then also, we know that we're going to have to buy some things, and like, as a, for instance, what came out of our recent conversation was, all the plastic gas cans we have in the Empire have to be dispensed with and brought, we have to buy new safety cans, because they don't meet the standard. So that's an incidental that has cropped up, as we start this two-way communication between the Safety Committee and the workforce, we're going to be, you know, being brought to our attention are more of these lower-hanging fruit things that we will have to address to go forward. So it's one of those things, it's here with us now, and one of the things that, in the last part of your package, is our two documents for the OSHA summary logs of injuries, accidents, and illnesses. Interestingly enough, we, you know, I told the staff that we're going to start compiling this for this coming year that we're in now, and that's a requirement that summary law get posted from February 1st to April 30th in every business across the United States. Well, we were sent a, a letter from the Bureau of Labor Statistics to start putting it together for this past year we were in, so what's happened is now that it's a state law to comply with this, our federal partners in government are coming down, and they're, what they're trying to do is prospect out information from the municipal front, what did you record last year? Please send it to us when you find out. So there's some, it's an added activity that we have to do on a lot of this stuff. We do record a lot of information from a worker's comp perspective, but now it's another form, another style to report it, we're going to try to integrate it with our comp reports. But it's, that's, you know, those are harder things to gauge as it relates to the cost. But there is a cost, but the theory is, and it's been tried and true in the best workplaces in the United States, safety morale has great dividends, but it's unfortunate, one of those things where we know less about what our future is than we know definitively. So it'll be kind of engaging the employees this year, picking off some trainings, using our resource with our interns to get a lot of the compulsory things done, and I would say by the end of the year, we'll have chipped off a lot of things, but it's just a new way of doing business for us.
So you're looking at $30,000?
It's $50,000 in the, in the free cash ask, that's correct.
Okay. That's great.
You know, one of the things I do know, like I had mentioned it to you in the past, we're going to move the police mechanic activity out of police garage, because that's just unrecoverable, and we're going to move that over to DPW, our water's garage, so, because it's a much safer environment there, it's more modern, it's better set up to be a garage, so there's certain activities in the town that are problematic, that we couldn't continue moving forward. Interestingly enough- Interestingly enough, our relationship with Weston and Sampson, that you know, we have on the water department side, they just have executed a safety and health audit of water department facilities and activities. And that there is a good baseline as to how the rest of the DPW infrastructure and town infrastructure will, will perform. And there's a lot of soft spots that we got to correct. And so, in that case, we're paying for that specialty from Weston and Sampson as part of that management agreement that we have. So we're, we're really trying to grab from a lot of different resources to put a program together that fulfills the regulatory requirement.
That's great. My last question, Mr. Chairman, is just, could I get a copy of this slide that I can read?
Actually, we'll give you the whole training matrix if you want.
That'd be great.
I can make your copies of that, no problem. I can actually send you the link. It's on the Maya website.
Okay.
Okay. Any comments? All right. Thank you very much.
Wow. Any questions for Joe? Are you sure?
No, thank you. It's great to see someone from Mass Maritime here.
Great resource, right down the street. We've been very happy with the intern program to date, so.
All right. We'll move on to our next item, PACE legislation.
Yeah, so I've asked Karen Green to come up and give you an introduction. PACE is a new program that was rolled out, and we have some visitors here from, I believe, Mass Development. It's property assessed clean energy legislation. It's a pretty powerful tool. We were, when I was with the state at DOE, we were working on writing the regulations at that time to allow for that for commercial properties. And then I left that ship and came here, and I was glad to see that it got over the finish line. So this is a presentation on that program.
That's great. Thank you. I would like to introduce, I think you all know Peter Smith. Peter's chairman of the Community and Economic Development Committee. And the committee was first approached, well, Dan and I were approached by Mass Development, and we brought it to the CEDC for them to review and learn about the program. And Peter is actually going to introduce Wendy O'Malley.
As Karen said, my name is Peter Smith. I'm the chairman of the Community and Economic Development Committee, CEDC. Part of our charge reads, quote, "CEDC shall work with local and regional partners to coordinate economic development efforts. CEDC shall stay abreast of state economic development initiatives." Massachusetts' property clean energy, PACE, program falls directly in line with these goals, which is why we're before you today. And I'd like to introduce Wendy O'Malley, who's the vice president of the PACE program for Mass Development. And she, she will explain the program in much more detail. Ms. O'Malley recently attended our October 22nd CEDC meeting and presented the PACE program to the committee. The PowerPoint presentation displayed at that meeting is the same one that will be presented this evening. After meeting with Ms. O'Malley, CEDC voted 5-0-0 to recommend that the town of Yarmouth opt into the PACE program. And the committee agreed that the program would be a benefit to the town as it would provide an additional investment incentive for businesses in Yarmouth. It would be beneficial for several of Yarmouth's commercial properties, in particular lodging facilities. After the presentation, you may consider adopting the motion, which is included in your packet. And I'll turn it over to Wendy now.
Thank you very much, Peter. Thank you, Karen, for the introduction. Thank you, Board, for allowing me to review the new property assessed clean energy program that Mass Development hopes to roll out later this year. It is an energy improvement financing program that's repaid via a tax-based financing mechanism that is, that is used to, I'm sorry, it, assessment that is billed via the, a tax-based financing is used to repay the financing from a third-party, private party. There is no public funds that are intended to be used for this financing program. Mass Development, under the statute, was named the program administrator. In consultation with the Department of Energy Resources, will be operating and administering this program. And we have developed guidelines under which private property owners can apply for financing for these projects. PACE is a national policy that has been already implemented in 20 states. It is coming in 13 more states where we have legislation that's been enabled, including the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It allows for private property owners to install energy improvements, such as energy efficiency and renewable energy at their properties, for financing terms up to 20 years. The long financing term will allow more comprehensive energy measures to be considered by property owners. In the states that have already financed projects, there have been close to $700 million total that have already been financed. Massachusetts is moving forward, as I said, later this year. Oh, sorry. I didn't.
You got a clicker there.
Okay. My apologies. Sorry. I'll just, so, just speaking about where we are, there are 20 states, as I mentioned, that have financed just under $700 million worth of projects. Regionally, Connecticut and Rhode Island already have active PACE programs. Massachusetts, as I said, is launching its program hopefully later this year for commercial I already spoke about the fact that Mass Development will be the program administrator for this program in consultation with the Department of Energy Resources, under legislation that was signed by the governor, under the Act to Promote Energy Diversity. This allows commercial and industrial properties, which is a little larger, a different definition than what you're normally used to. This also includes multifamily, five units or more, in terms of commercial properties. So here are some examples. Really, the only properties that are not eligible are municipal and governmental properties, because this is a tax-based financing mechanism. I won't go down the list of eligible measures, but what you can consider normally is energy efficiency or renewable energy is allowable under this program. Savings must be demonstrated from the measures that are implemented, and those savings must repay that investment over the term of the financing. So under this program, it must be a positive cash flow in order for a project to be approved for financing. There are some key requirements of the program. As we stated earlier, each municipality is required to authorize or opt into the program initially, before any private property owner can apply for financing under the program. So that is where Mass Development is working with all the municipalities and the Commonwealth to inform them of how this program works. That is where we met with the town earlier this year, or, sorry, last year, regarding the details of this program, how it would work to make them comfortable. And we have gone through a public process where we developed the guidelines, released draft, a draft for public review. The comments we received were favorable, and so we are going to be forward with the program as envisioned. Under this program, we will allow banks and capital providers to work with private property owners. We will not be issuing any bonds, although we are allowed under statute to do that. Because PACE is repaid through a betterment assessment that's placed on the property, and I'm not sure if the Board is familiar with betterment assessments and how they've been used historically, but they have been used to repay for projects that have benefited a certain group. So typically, you would think of sidewalk improvements, sewer improvements, as things that have been assessed. Here, under the state law, the PACE program and the PACE financing can be repaid through a betterment assessment that's placed on the property and secured by a lien that is placed on the property. Under the statute, if there is an existing mortgage on the property, consent must be provided by the existing mortgage holder in order for the financing to be approved. This is a non-accelerating assessment, meaning that the entire obligation, the entire financing cannot be called in if there is a default. This makes it very attractive to the financing world, and private property owners should receive rates that are on par or better when looking to finance these projects versus the alternatives that they would be normally subject to for financing. Also, because it is a 20-year term, that is a much longer term than property owners are normally able to access for financing these types of improvements. If the property is sold, the remaining assessment obligation transfers to new ownership. So typically, in energy improvement projects, property owners are usually asked to make 100% of the upfront investment on these installations. Here, the property owner pays for the investment for the time they own the property. Should the property transfer to sale, the new owner will assume the obligation of the assessment and the lien, and they will then take on the value of that improvement on their property. Another chart that you probably can't read, but what you can read is that Mass Development is in the middle. And so that's what we want you to know, is that we are responsible for this program. We will work with the private property owners, the lenders, the energy contractors, and the other stakeholders that are part of this process. The red arrows and the blue arrows are intended to represent actions or contracts that need to be signed by the different entities in the commercial PACE structure. So it's just intended to give you a visual representation of the different entities that are in a PACE project. But again, we are right here in the middle, and that's where we stand as the program administrator and the responsible party. I know I covered a lot of information in a short period. I'm happy to take any questions regarding the program at this time.
Questions from the Board?
I just have one. The, so is the, is the betterment going to come in the form of an increase on your tax bill?
It would be an additional line item that's billed and collected on the tax bill. But it is essentially, if you were to look at the amortization schedule of the financing, it would be, the repayment would be added on as the PACE assessment.
And so how is the financial institution or the lender going to get repaid? Are they going to bill the town, and it will be the town's responsibility for keeping track of what tax dollars are, are paid by the commercial property owners that are supposed to be going towards the PACE program and repaying that betterment?
Because it's a betterment assessment, under the general laws, we have to work through the municipality to bill and collect the assessment. Unfortunately, we don't have any flexibility to go outside that process.
So the town's going to collect the money and you'll bill the town, if you have 20 betterments throughout town, you're just going to send the town a monthly or an annual bill, and the town will write you a check to repay for the...
It would work project by project. So when a project closes, we would submit the amortization schedule for the betterment assessments for that individual project, and the town would theoretically enter it into their software system and bill it on that schedule. I would point out that this is for projects that are intended to be above $250,000 in cost. So this is not going to be a widespread betterment assessment-type CPA charge. This is really one-offs, where you would have a large project in town, where you have a developer who is seeking financing to fill the capital stack and make a project go forward so that it is in the best and most efficient way, in terms of the energy infrastructure that they are implementing or renovating as part of that project.
Thank you for the presentation. It's an interesting concept. It certainly allows, you know, people to make these energy-efficient strategies, which aren't always, you know, startup costs of which aren't always inexpensive. It makes them more affordable, for sure.
And I should add that there, you can fund items such as doors, windows, roofs, things that normally are not financeable under alternative energy financing. So this really provides 100% of the cost that a property owner may need to fund for a project.
100%?
Could fund up to 100%.
So if I'm going to build a million-dollar commercial property, and I break out $300,000 worth of that to be items that may be reimbursable, or be qualified under this program, I can reduce my mortgage by that amount, and I can, I can finance the remainder through this program?
If it meets the other guideline requirements, such as really the, the main one is the savings to investment requirement, but yes.
Interesting. Thank you.
I just wonder, who does the work to determine the savings? So say you're getting 12 doors, how do you know that those doors, as opposed to another doors, that the R factors, there's, go ahead, Peter.
I financed a number of, of energy-saving projects, and you get, you get an engineer to come in and say, this is what the savings are going to be, this is what the investment tax credit's going to be, this is what other savings, the depreciation that's going to come into it. And I've got, I've got a customer right now who's looking at a million-dollar project in one of the 15 towns. And it's estimated his savings in electric, electric costs will be close to $100,000 a year. So there's an engineer that comes in and determines how much electricity is going to be generated by this, what the rate is, rate's going to be, and what his overall savings is going to be. We also, also have engineers that come in and do what the R-value savings are going to be in terms of windows and doors. We've done these in the past. So it's, it's a, it's a third party that makes the determination.
Also, as part of the program, we will require developers and owners to go through either the Mass Save program, or what will be the Future Smart program. So our program's intended to align with the current state programs that are already out there, in terms of their requirements and how they generate savings for those measures. And then under the guidelines, if it's not addressed in the current state programs, we're looking to something called the Investor Confidence Project, which is a national protocol that is trying to be used, not just in PACE, but for energy projects overall, to give consistency when developing these energy savings. So if you look at energy projects, there's ASHRAE, DOE, there are different, different calculators that you can use, and not one is, you know, one may be better than the other, but you know, there, there needs to be one that's picked among the standard in the industry. And so that's what we're moving towards. So, so if it's not addressed in the current state programs, we're looking to the Investor Confidence Project for how the savings would be also certified under these, which would be done by an engineer, as he said.
When you see these types of projects roll out, I'm always interested in other communities that have bought into it.
Move forward.
And any of the negatives that have come from that? Have you seen any learning lessons from communities that have entered this and haven't done something right? It seems pretty straightforward legislation, either you pick it or you don't. The people, what I like about this is nobody's forcing anybody to do it. It's completely an option of a developer.
It is. So Massachusetts, even though it's late to the game in terms of the national PACE industry, we have benefited in terms of seeing how the other programs have operated, how they've created their statutory, and then their guidelines. So we've taken a hybrid approach, and taken what we think are the best practices from all the other programs, and we feel that's going to work very well within the Commonwealth structure. There have been no defaults under the commercial PACE program to date. If you look at the other PACE transactions that have already been financed in the 20 other states, many of them have already now been securitized, and they're now being studied in terms of the bond rating agencies, and they are giving them very high ratings for PACE securitizations and transactions. So we feel confident that in terms of our research, and taking the, the best aspects of the other programs, that we've created a, a program that will work very well in terms of the construct of how we work. A municipal opt-in, we felt, was a very key component, and not requiring municipalities to participate, but letting them have the voluntary option to authorize this.
Thank you, Wendy.
You're welcome.
What's the interest rate that's typically, typical for these?
So it's on par or better than what the borrower would have received otherwise for financing. So because this is based not just on the borrower, but this is based on the property, this is tied to the property, and moves with the property, as we say, it runs with the property, because it is an assessment and a lien. It actually gets better, or more favorable consideration from the lending community and underwriters, because it's repaid through an assessment, because there is a, a process that has already been clearly laid out in terms of the guidelines, how the savings are calculated. It's, it's not nearly... It's not nearly as questionable, I'll say, as financing just an energy project that is developed by a property owner and a private firm. You have a mass development, you have DOE-R, you have the municipality, you have a number of entities in this transaction, which lends confidence in terms of the financing proposal that's put forth, we believe, by the banking community and the lenders. And that's been demonstrated in the other programs.
So a lot of commercial financing these days are probably in the, what, 7% or 8% range?
We would like to get that rate, but we don't. It's less than that right now, albeit rates are going...rates are going up and have been for about 18 months now. A typical commercial property would run anywhere from 5.5% to 6.5%.
Really? Okay.
But the...it's interesting that you say that the value goes with the property and not necessarily just the building. I don't know that that...
The obligation. So the financing runs with the property. That's really the most unique aspect of this. Typically, when you're looking at financing these energy projects, you're looking just the borrower and their credit, and you're looking at their ability to repay. You're now looking at the property, you're looking at the asset that is affixed to the property, that continues to be at that property even if the borrower defaults. And that's where, because it's an assessment and it's non-accelerating, meaning the entire obligation cannot be called in in the event of a default, that makes the lending community feel much more secure that really what is the at-risk proposition? Should there be a default? What is the...you know, what do they potentially stand to lose? If it's non-accelerating, the remaining assessment financing obligation is still with the property and assumed by the new owner. That is a tremendous benefit for them.
I'm surprised securitization would be popular at that interest rate that you're talking about. I mean, I don't know how much margin there is in there.
I will say, I hesitate to quote any interest rates, because everybody's subject to different interest rates. As you know, when you go to get a mortgage, your mortgage rate is different than yours'. This is just the same. You go to a bank, you go to a financier, you present your property and your project, and they offer you what they offer you. So you could be at a very low interest rate, you could be at a very high interest rate, but hopefully, when you're under a PACE proposal, you're better than what your alternative was.
Question on not-for-profits, it includes schools. Is that schools in a school district, or is it a school like a charter school or something of that nature?
It could be a charter school, it could be an independent school. Nonprofits are tricky, because they may or may not pay taxes. So a pilot would need to be in place for a nonprofit to participate in a PACE project. I'll leave it at that. That's up to the nonprofits' discretion on whether or not they want to move forward. But it is eligible under the program.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, thank you. Thank you, Wendy, for being here. It's great seeing Mass Development doing more and more work on the Cape. So I hope this works well. What I'm curious...Eric asked all my questions, but I have one, and that is, I noticed that there's some requirement where we...do we have to pass an ordinance or something at town meeting?
That's the opt-in requirement. So not at town meeting. So it's...each municipality has its own process that they use to approve ordinances or resolutions like these. We have 14 that have already moved forward with PACE authorization. They've done so by Board of Selectmen vote, City Council vote.
Okay, so it just is...so it's just a decision and action by the board to opt into the program. Other strings attached to it? Do we...are we able, at some point, to see what that resolution is or what that looks like? Is it in our packet?
I believe it's in your packet at the last page.
Okay. Great. Okay. Thank you. Sorry.
It's the last page in your packet, sorry.
Thank you.
It's Mass Development drafted it, and it's been used by the other municipalities.
So I'm assuming at some point, the town administrator will ask us to endorse this.
Well, I think they have tonight.
Mrs. Green?
We could do it.
Right. So we did run this through council this week. He took a look. You...it's a very long motion. You don't have to make the entire motion. If you may, if you like.
But you're expecting us to...are you expecting us to read this and act on this tonight?
Well, at some point.
Soon. Okay.
I guess soon.
Just asking.
Just keep an options open.
Yeah, I will read it. I will read...I just didn't know if I had to quickly read it now and then.
I would bring to your attention, there's a memo from Andy Machado just before that that talks about the impact to his department, and he believes that the benefit to the Yarmouth business community far outweighs any problems that they might have associated with the work here. And I think to the presentation point tonight, these are large-ticket items, it's not like there's going to be a flood of willy-nilly projects. So...but Andy was definitely in favor of doing this, so.
Okay. So this relates to when you said you have a prepared motion or some action.
Well, that's the whereas page.
Yes.
I guess I'm having trouble finding things tonight.
It's long.
It's the last page.
The last page.
With the whereas and notwithstanding.
Yeah.
Do you want to read that?
Yeah.
That's why I want to know.
I think we'll take a couple of quick questions.
Page J1.
Take an opportunity to absorb it before we... I just had a couple of quick questions, if I may. In terms of the collateralization of the property, you said there's no acceleration clause if there's a default. So what position is the lender in? I mean, typically, on a mortgage, if somebody defaults, let's say for a couple of months or whatever, you're going to get foreclosure procedures instituted. Where does the lender stand at this...at that point?
The PACE lender?
Yeah.
So the PACE lender becomes second to...in position. So the municipality remains first, senior, always. With consent, the PACE lender becomes second.
Okay, but again, in terms of...
Would you like me to walk through the default scenario and why you would...
Well, let's say somebody does default for a couple of months, they're not paying anybody. What happens then at that point?
So if you think about the billing cycle for taxes and that there's three months in between each assessment build, if the PACE assessment is in default, the lender would realize it and then have the right to take action as they normally would for default. But if you think about the fact that the PACE assessment has been defaulted on, it's likely that the mortgage has been defaulted on as well. And because the mortgage holder has provided consent in order for a PACE financing to occur, they now are looking at the fact that they have a much higher outstanding amount at risk than the PACE assessment. So there, and we've looked at this as a lender ourselves, you would move to pay off the PACE assessment so that you remained in this...now in the second position in terms of enforcement of that default, because you want to control how that moves forward. The PACE assessment is going to be minimal in terms of amount compared to the mortgage amount that's outstanding. So the mortgage holder has all the incentive to remain in the position to decide how they want to enforce a default. So that's how that would be remedied. Because it's non-accelerating, the remaining obligation, again, keeps moving with the property, and so you're not talking about a large assessment.
You also mentioned that the betterment, if you will, passes on from a buyer to a seller...excuse me, seller to a buyer, in that it runs with the sale, basically, the buyer assumes it. In terms of it getting into the latter years of the betterment, are the parties required to behave that way, or could they negotiate that the seller's going to pay off the balance of that at the closing?
So, yeah, so, you know, the seller could look to see what the terms of the original financing were. They could move to prepay the entire obligation. That would be at their option. So just like any buyer would, they'd look at whatever's on the front.
Right, so they're free to contract on that level, just like any other term of a sale?
Yes. As long as it's paid off ultimately.
The other question I had, in terms of getting an engineer to show that these savings, these energy savings are justified in terms of meeting the amount of the monies that are going to be granted to him to do the...to do the various energy savings. You say there's an engineer that would normally do that workup. Do you know typically how much that would cost?
So it could be done a variety of ways. So I wouldn't know how much that would cost. Usually, in the development of a project, depending on how large it is, you have an energy service company or an energy contractor who goes out and does an audit, who does a preliminary survey of what the estimate of savings could be, and then the property owner decides to engage them to move forward on either the whole scope or number of measures, and then holds them to a standard, whether it be a guarantee of the savings or, you know, whatever it may be. And that's where the cost component comes in, in terms of what you're asking them for. In terms of the audit, they may charge you a per-square-foot cost to actually buy that audit from them if you don't move forward with the actual project. Usually, it's wrapped into a project, and they don't break out the cost as a separate component.
And I guess, along the same lines of switching the question to Peter, in terms of the lenders, do you always pretty much rely on those audits from the engineer, or do you ever sometimes question them and say, "You know, we're not loaning the money because we don't think you did a good...an in-depth enough survey"?
We always question the information coming from a third-party irrespective of the source, and we try to verify it through, you know, another third-party. Again, we've done a number of solar projects and done by three different companies, and their...their energy savings has been within 3% to 4% to 5% of what they predicted initially. And so we're quite comfortable with those particular companies. There's some other ones that we're not as comfortable with, so we do try to get another third-party to review it. I'm not an engineer, but, you know, I can read a report and have somebody explain what all the acronyms mean.
So if you see variables that aren't consistent with what you're normally seeing, you probably would question that and get some kind of verification.
Right. And again, with a solar project, it really depends...and I was looking at one that's been in place for five years now, and it depends on if the sun's shining or not, literally. And 2017, for the month of December, it was cloudy almost the entire month, and there was a major drop. In January of 2018, there was much more sun, so it jumped up. So and so we've seen this over five years on this particular project, because we get a quarterly report on how they're doing. You know, the customer is always thrilled to give this to us, to show us how much money he's making in savings.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the mechanics of this, you know, I understand, you know, we're talking big projects, so, you know, we're not likely to have a huge number of these, but on the mechanics of it, the town is given a dollar amount of a betterment to bill to the property owner. Is that...so, you know, if it's, I don't know, over 20 years, a thousand dollars a month, whatever. Does that have to be...how is that billed? Does that build as our...along with our municipal taxes?
It's billed as a separate line item on the municipal property tax bill. So you would see the municipal property tax amount, and then you would see an additional line item, theoretically, PACE assessment, that amount that would be due. The property owner would be required to pay both amounts total to the municipality, Yarmouth. If Yarmouth receives the full amount, they then would disburse only the PACE assessment to Mass Development as the program administrator.
And if it's a partial amount?
Just the PACE assessment amount.
About the municipal tax.
Of the municipal tax.
No, no. Let's say we've got two items on there. We've got a $1,000 PACE item and a $1,000 tax, and the owner pays $1,000. So they've short-paid somebody.
Short-paid PACE, because you guys got your $1,000. You come first.
All right. And then...and then the town is required to send the money to?
Mass Development. Or we'll have a servicer, but yes, Mass Development.
And then you pay the lender?
Correct.
Okay, so there's multiple steps along the way. What does the town get for reimbursement for the administrative services?
We will reimburse the municipalities for any recording fees incurred.
But no processing fees?
By processing, do you mean?
Well, you know, I'm assuming if we're sending a payment to Mass Development, I mean...
If you mean for staff time?
Well, just hear me out. You're contracting out, so you're paying a contractor to process that payment. What about the town? The town is processing the payment as well. Are you paying the town anything?
So we are not, because we have not been budgeted any money by the legislature for administering this program. We were just named as the program administrator. We will be trying to self-support this program through fees that are generated through the financings. We are looking at this as a tool for the municipalities in terms of the projects that hopefully will benefit your community that would move forward. We do not have a budget, unfortunately, to reimburse or pay towns for staff effort. We would not be able to successfully...
Know how much this will be in terms of staff effort, but nonetheless, there isn't any reimbursement to the town for the administrative services.
There is not.
No, I'm just in conversation with Wendy, talking about who else in the Commonwealth has indicated being interested in moving forward with this. You know, I think that we're unique in that we worked collaboratively with the finance team to look at this, consider this program possibility. Is this something we have capacity to take on? And I think that, you know, and I would let Ed speak for himself, but I think that in terms of kind of the extra workload versus the investment that might happen in town as a result of this additional, that, you know, I think the program was viewed favorably by the Finance Committee in that it would be kind of a worthwhile extra effort. I don't know if that helps.
Yeah. Reading between the lines, there's no direct reimbursement to the town, albeit XYZ Property puts a million dollars on. That would presumably increase their assessment by a considerable amount, which would also increase their taxes.
The question is to Ed was, okay, so what mechanism do we have? Is it going to be personal property tax? Will it vary by situation as to whether it's personal property tax or whether it's...
You know, with proposition 2.5, we can't raise more than 2.5 above what the previous year's assessments are. So if somebody's property becomes more valuable, that means that they'll take on a greater share of the taxes, which might lower somebody else's taxes. Just to speak to the productivity aspect of it, so I brought my team into a meeting, that's Andy Machado, Sue Ripley, and I. And what we're going to have to do, just like we did or have done in the last five years when our staff has been cut, is we need to find other productivity savings, and we're confident that we can. So we can fit this...we feel that the benefit to our business community, because we feel that finance is a partner in economic development, just like community development and some of the other folks. So what we do is, just like Cape Cod Energy Park, some of the other initiatives that we've started, we think that we need to do things that help our business community and help spur development and jobs in the town, and that's why we think we can make this work. When we pay the bill, what we're going to do, just like any other vendors, is send it via EFT. So we're not going to create a paper check, put it in an envelope, and mail it to people. We'll streamline this process, just like we've streamlined every process within the Finance Department and throughout the town as it relates to financial transactions. We're comfortable, because we've done that for years. I've done it for 30 years. So I know that we will squeeze out every year more productivity out of our departments.
Okay. You may have...maybe I didn't make my question clear. Solar development, a million-dollar solar development.
Right.
Isn't that new growth?
That is new growth. That's correct.
Okay. So we would have some additional tax revenues?
That's correct.
As a result of new growth?
Yes.
As long as we're smart enough to tax it.
Yes, and we've changed how we operate in the assessing department. We used to take a look at new growth, three years out of the nine, out of an assessment cycle. Now we have a person, because we've reduced the number of people in the assessment department and streamlined that operation, we have a person going out... and streamlined that operation, we have a person going out every day looking for new growth opportunities because they're going through their cyclical inspections. We've actually, as a part of putting in a cella in place, anytime somebody takes out a permit, that information is downloaded into our assessing system so that we can go out and we can assess that. So we've got some sophisticated capabilities and automation in place so that we can make sure that we try to uncover any new growth opportunities that we can.
Let me ask you another question. Let's say that a motel in town is currently paying its taxes based upon its profits.
Yep, using the Rushmore method, yes.
Right. How would a solar development in that case be handled?
Again, new growth. So if they.
So that property would be assessed for the additional million dollars of whether it's, on the real estate value? How do you accomplish that?
Right, so they produce an income and expense form. So that means that their profitability by reducing their expenses would increase their profitability. And that's taking it into consideration when we get their income and expense forms back.
Okay. Not as easy as one, two, three?
It is not. Yep.
Okay. Okay. I don't know, what does the board want to do? I mean?
Make a motion authorizing the town of Yarmouth to participate in the Massachusetts Commercial Property Assess Clean Energy Program as stated in our packet.
I'll second that.
Well, that was simple. You don't want to read the whole thing. I know it's late.
Karen, is there a certain amount of information that needs to be read?
You know, I think that the meat and the potatoes is one, two, three, four, five, sixth paragraph down, the whereas, now therefore, be it ordered.
Okay, go ahead and read it, and I'll.
Oh, okay. I had to put the glasses on.
I'll go ahead.
That's the longest part of the whole.
The Board of Selectmen of the Town of Yarmouth hereby authorizes the municipality participating in Pace Massachusetts, pursuant to the Pace Act and authorizes the town administrator enter into a Pace Massachusetts Municipal Assessment and Assignment Agreement, the agreement with Mass Development pursuant to which the municipality will agree to, one, levy pace betterment assessments and impose pace betterment assessments on lien, assessment liens on benefited properties located in the municipality, in the amounts determined by, I'm going to follow the lines here.
Mass Development.
Mass Development to be sufficient to repay the pace financing. And two, assign the pace betterment assessment liens to Mass Development, which Mass Development may in turn assign to the providers of the pace financing, each a capital provider, as collateral for such pace financing. Number three, include on the pace, on the property tax bills for the benefited properties, and the installment payments necessary to repay the pace betterment assessments in the amounts and at the times as determined by Mass Development. Four, collect and pay to Mass Development or as designee the pace betterment assessment installment payments as and when collected. And five, enforce to the extent required by the agreement the pace betterment assessments and liens, the agreement to be substantially in the form presented to this meeting with such, did we get that presented in this meeting? With such changes, modifications, and insertions as the town administrator may approve as being in the best interest of the municipality. The collector treasurer of the town, or such other town agency as may be designated in the agreement, is authorized to levy such pace betterment assessments and impose the pace betterment assessment liens on behalf of the town without further authorization by this legislative body. Well, here comes a notwithstanding.
You got to watch out for those.
Notwithstanding.
That's all you want?
With trepidation, any other provision of the law to the contrary, officers and officials of the municipality, including without limitation, municipal tax assessors and tax collectors, are not personally liable to the Mass Development or to any other person for claims or of whatever kind of nature under or related to Pace Massachusetts, including without limitation, claims for or related to uncollected pace betterment assessments. Other than fulfillment of the obligations specified in the agreement, notwithstanding, no, the municipality has no liability to the owner of the benefited property or to any capital provider related to the municipality's participation in Pace Massachusetts.
Tell them. Second.
I have a question.
Yes.
Did you say comma?
All right. So we're there. All right. In that case, are there any further questions? Those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you very much, board.
Thank you.
See how common that phrase is, though? It really is. It says, despite all of what, despite all of what you read, the town has no liability.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah.
Oh.
Unfortunately, that's what it means.
Good lesson right now, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Loud and clear.
What standing stuff. All right. We have committee appointments. Mark?
Yeah, we have one, Mr. Chairman, and that is to fill an unexpired term of a member of the Board of Health that resigned. And the Board of Health interviewed this candidate, and I reviewed their recommendations with our health director. And so we're presenting to you a recommendation to appoint Eric Weston to the Town of Yarmouth's Board of Health. And the appointment is to fill an unexpired term running through October 2021.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It carries. Thank you. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Review of ATM articles. Dan?
Yeah, excuse me. In your packet is articles as we presently foresee them for the spring town meeting. So I wanted to make sure that you had them in your hands and you have a chance to review them before the next meeting on the 29th, which will also represent the moment in time in which you have to close the warrant for any further articles. So we'll be finalizing some of these details with internal town staff on that. But this is what we know to date. There might be something I might want to add on the 29th, so I wanted to make sure you had this in your hands.
I think you should add the town meeting question.
Well, it's number 16, right?
Is it?
So it's already on there. There was another thing we talked about tonight that would have to go before the town. Oh, there was a letter and a thing about the capitalization, capital.
Yeah, that just came in today. So the school department has requested a, an article for capital stabilization account, the purpose of which, as it was explained to me, I'll send you an email tomorrow. I got it very late today. If, in practical circumstance, if they had had one of these items, like Cape Tech did, the borrowings, they needed to advance a school project, they could draw the money from that. So it's a way in which kind of much how we have a rainy day account, same one for the district.
I think we need a placeholder, at least.
We do. That's correct.
But they, my understanding is that stabilization fund can be drawn by one of two means.
Both times, two-thirds vote of the school committee.
Yep.
Two-thirds, or by the DESE commissioner.
No, not the commissioner. The school committee has to take the vote. The commissioner's role would be if, for instance, in which there was a borrowing or there was a withdraw provision that was not consistent with the standards that set up that account, then the commissioner could be consulted and they could grant their approval for that. I don't have a specific case, but in any event, the withdrawing tool is the two-thirds vote of the school committee.
Okay. Okay, so that's not in here anyways?
No, it's not reflected in there because that's new. And there may be another one. I'll send you an email on it tomorrow as to what you want to do. But we'll need to know for sure by the 29th, so.
We can always remove them.
That's correct.
Best thing to do is put the placeholder in for now.
I will say that we did receive some good news on the IOD article we talked about, or the LOD article, that stabilization account, if you will. We were, first read on the, whether or not wages could be drawn from the stabilization account, was that it didn't sound like it was, but Jay's staff had followed up further, the Department of Revenue. Chris had been following that through. So I think we can address the LOD account issue for extenuating, like you had heard tonight, Detective Shine, he was gone for a year. If we had known that, his wage could be pulled out of the future out of that account, I suppose would be the way that we would look at that. So we got some, I think that'll end up being just one article now as opposed to, we had it presently at two, so.
Dan, this last week, there was a note about the purchase of that motel on Route 28.
Yes.
And a grant that we received for $400,000.
Right.
And it said something about having to revote.
Yeah.
Is that in here?
Yeah, well, I don't, I think, I'm not sure if Karen installed it, but it'll be part of that provision. So apparently in Yankee Village Revote, number 34.
Right.
As part of what was put in front of town meeting last year, we didn't have exactly the right language in the article, exactly, so that the state program would approve it. So it's simply, we've now been noticed that we have the grant, we just have to dress it up with a revote at town.
Okay. How, if we decided that we wanted to get on the cycle of having CPA and zoning items considered as a separate, how do we get on to that cycle?
Article 16, we have to get the original date changed, and then we can opt for.
Right. I think it's fair to say I would defer that to Karen and the staff, Gary Ellis, to talk about how internally, because everything changes with that, the way in which we put projects forward when they come and advance it to their board, to us. So it's going to, you know, I think it's a good idea for a lot of different reasons. It's just, we're a little bit, we would be a little bit off cycle, so they'd have to have some internal conversation as to how they want to proceed.
Yeah. Okay.
You got the information on that?
The idea in terms of finances is you'd allot a certain portion in for housing, et cetera, the categories in the annual town meeting. And then in the fall is when you'd actually disburse those most to the various projects.
Yeah, so you still have those buckets of money, affordable housing, historic, preservation, open space.
Okay.
But they won't be able to be changed, though, when they get to the meat of the article. If somebody moved to change, elevate a number, we'd have to take the whole budget back.
Yeah, it'd be a little different.
Karen's been working with the various committees, as Dan mentioned, to kind of conception talk about how that would work for all the things in her roles.
Okay. Well, we need to review that in any case and then be ready for the next meeting.
Yeah, it'll be a while before we have that ready for you, for sure.
Okay. All right, we have minutes for the meeting of April 24th.
Moved minutes.
We have a second.
I'll second it for discussion. Just out of general curiosity, why are these taking nine months?
We had some extenuating staff leaves of absence at kind of critical times that we were generating a lot of meetings, a lot of other negotiating groups who were generating minutes. And so we got a little bit behind on that. Hopefully, the plan was to get us all caught up by January 1. We didn't quite make that, but I anticipate in the next 60 days we'll be caught up for sure.
Good. Thank you.
Okay. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Upcoming agenda review. So January 29th, do we have a carryover in executive session of the item that was omitted tonight?
That's an interesting question. We can discuss that offline with the chairman as to whether or not you would want to post another one, ever further. So that's fine. There's already one scheduled there for collective bargaining. And then the one related to the property acquisition wasn't ready. The lawyers hadn't got all the documents to us in time. So I'm not sure where that one is. But as it stands now, it looks like we'll be on, Chris is on target. He would need one next meeting on the 29th.
We're ready for the 29th.
Okay.
So we should plan on an executive session coming early?
Yeah, 5:00.
Okay, 5:00.
If it's one item, we could do 5:30. I mean, I imagine it wouldn't go on, but I defer to the board and the chair.
Town council will be here on the 12th anyways. On February 12th, that's their normal meeting, staff meeting day. So if you wanted to defer further conversation with council and executive session, the 12th would be the good day to do that anyways.
On collective bargaining?
No, on this other issue that came up tonight.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
I guess we'll have to play that by ear based on what happens in the next week or so.
But I just think for planning purposes, we should be prepared. I mean, it definitely should be.
Yeah, I think we should be.
I know in terms of me planning my schedule, I'm going to at least make a note that there's a good chance we'll be here at 5:00.
Yeah. Okay, that's fine.
Those things never go as fast as we think.
No.
No, well.
Nothing does.
Always depends on the subject, you know, it's a.
It's another five-hour meeting.
Yeah, really.
Can we put that poker thing off?
The what?
We certainly can. I can let her know.
This is not the time of year to be dealing with this.
I will tell you this, I did gather up all the information. I think on the 28th, the Board of Health had asked for some additional information from the town departments. But essentially, I think I kind of reported out last time, our use of it as a staff is very minimal. They did indicate that if the board did so order, we could live without it, but it would obviously, I think at last meeting, I talked about some of the impacts. In the grand scheme of things, I personally think that our use is very judicious. The staff is very well cognizant of the situation where we tend to typically use it as in resource areas anyways that are, you know, very problematic to begin with. So, you know, like I said, I don't mind putting that off. But I have a memo, I'll get to you, that talks a little bit more specifics of how much we're using. But it's not that, not a huge amount, but where we do use it, it does have an impact, for sure. Mostly the vendors, too, because I remember, as I mentioned to you, the fragmites removal is very, it's a very difficult invasive plant to kill.
That's what NSTAR said.
Mechanical methods is not a good way to do it, so.
Yeah, certainly.
That's what NSTAR said.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, I want to just follow up on Eric's point. Is there a way we can just get a resolution, put it in the consent agenda?
Well, we could.
Make a motion right now. Make a motion that we not ban Roundup in the Town of Yarmouth.
Yeah, you know, that's one of those things where.
Well, I think if we do that, we probably have to post that, right?
It's on in there.
No, I can put a resolution on there, but I need a little bit of direction from you folks as to how you want me to proceed with that. But like I said, it.
I wasn't here for that discussion, so.
If you wanted to get some.
You watched it, and you're here now.
We have some town goats up there.
Nice try.
If you want to use those, right?
Well, that's a very full day, I will admit that. I think we have to look at shortening.
The committee handbook is, it will move off the 29th. That'll move into February. So that's another item that won't be on the 29th.
I did see the library presentation yesterday. It's a good presentation, but it takes a while to move through. There's a lot of information. So that's, that would be all of a half an hour, for sure.
I'm very comfortable with the chair and the administrator cutting out a couple things just to make it more.
I think we need to do that, you know. And then water resources.
We're going to be here all night.
Again, yeah. We've got a lot of, a lot of stuff in that, yeah.
Is that sufficient enough direction at this point?
I think so. And, and is your review going to be at the end, or?
How would you like, I mean, if you want to push it off, I mean, I can go with it.
No, well, no, I, no, I'm just kidding. At this point, the, but there are an awful lot of weighty items in that agenda.
As Rich said, I'll be showing up to work the next day, so if you wanted to move it off to the 12th, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Well, let's move something to the 12th. I'm not sure that that's, that's an appropriate thing to move necessarily. We do have to have, as we're here on the 15th, yeah, we need to have those forms. Can you, you need those to us?
Yes, I can get those forms to you. That's correct, yeah. And I'll also, I'll give you a quick status update on some of the goals that we have for the board. And then some things that are in the works that we'll, we talked. about during teaming.
Okay, that's fair enough. Okay, any other comments on the agenda at this stage? I mean, this is the time of year we're hitting the departmental reviews, and we've got both the fire department and police department on the 29th, and then DPW, so on the following. Okay.
That's gonna be an awful meeting.
All right.
As opposed to-
Let's move ahead then, individual items? Anyone?
Yeah, I'll start. Tracy and I are over here, I haven't been able to feel my feet for two hours. We both have our feet wrapped up with jackets because this floor-
Awful.
Where this intake is, is 20 degrees. My feet are numb, and this is only-
I am not carrying you to the car.
Was this like this last year?
I've, I've been complaining about this for years.
I don't think it was like this last year.
I'm glad you're here. No, because remember I wanted to move over there, remember?
Kurt, was this like this?
That's right, yeah, and I didn't realize how bad it was over there.
Oh, my god.
It's awful.
I've got thermal socks on, and my feet are completely numb.
Start the thermostat.
It doesn't, because the heat comes from up there, this is where the cold air goes in.
If you warm the upper part of you, it'll be okay.
I'm gonna have to bring a little space heater and plug it in over there and put it up there.
Well, that does say-
It's bad.
Are you cold, though?
Oh, it's brutal down here.
You could do ice cubes on the floor, honestly.
So, so-
And I'm glad you said it because I'm sure people are wondering when I'm playing with all the time.
We're over here fussing, I have my down coat wrapped around my feet and ankles.
Tracy's lips are getting blue.
Have we fa, have we factored a space heater into the energy management plan?
Maybe we can get a loan for that development.
Get a nice one. In fact, just get new chairs is a pretty good move.
That was a good move.
Get heat in them?
Maybe get them heated, right? Heated chairs.
I was thinking about a Snuggie or an electric blanket, but-
We could do Snuggies on town appreciation.
Snuggies would be awesome.
And also, my other individual item is, not that I want to spend any time tonight on it, but at some point, we should put Bass Hole back on our radar.
Yes.
Both for the, for the, for the grass management component and the parking component. It seems like more and more, wherever I go, people are concerned, if not upset, about the fact that there's a quarter mile of cars lining both sides of the street on any given day in the summer, and it's dangerous. You know, my wife and I walk down there a lot, as you do, Norm, and you can't get out of traffic because, you know, the cars clog up a significant portion of the road.
It's bad enough without parking.
Yes.
I mean, just the, the normal walking, and it gets back to that sidewalk, because it's, it is dangerous. I mean, I, I've taken to carrying a stick and, and literally having the stick, stick out so that if a car comes by, they're gonna get whacked if they get that close, because they, they do on occasion.
Yeah, so, those, if we can just put that back on, you know, sometime when we're not so busy, but I just don't want it to fall off the radar.
It's looking like April.
Right, yeah.
It's gonna be a while, but we need to have it in the agenda.
Yeah, we have to have the discussion, so, that's all, thank you.
All right, thank you, anyone else? Individual items? Okay, Dan?
A motion on the consent agenda, some donations, if we could have a motion of-
Second.
Okay, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. All right.
Update is, I think the DHY meeting we had talked about, we had been under the anticipation that we'd call the three towns together in late January, but it looks like due to the, the legislation not getting enacted, the latest I got, it could be put off till that legislation, when that get heard till like August. So the three-town meeting would be put off right now, as it looks like somewhere between like late February, early March, probably more like early March. We plan on bringing Representative Pete in, she's in leadership in the House, and Representative Whalen into the next DHY meeting for February 15th, to get a better understanding of what the legislative calendar would look like for this upcoming year. So if that's gonna be what it is, then all of this DHY-related legislative activity at the local level would be moved down to, looks like everybody's looking to be lined up for a fall town meeting anyways. So that's the latest on that, although I believe that as part of the March meeting that we'd bring the three towns, they would like resolution on that agreement language. We did talk about Selectman Forrest, and I updated the group on the three commissioners for Yarmouth 2 and 2 with the caveat that we would consider language that the board, as the appointing authority, would not necessarily appoint all three commissioners to be board members. So they're gonna go back to the other town, see how that goes, but at some point, we're gonna have to bring our negotiating group back together and kind of get a sign off on that, and then go to that three-town meeting in early, early March.
Dan, on that, I mean, we're over 50%.
Yes.
That calculates to four members.
Right, oh, well.
Well, but why have we given up for a member?
You know, we-
And who have we given it up to?
Actually, what we did is, and Mark can bring some clarity to this, it actually started out as, I want to say, very small group, and then they settled on a much larger group, and then we came down for workability in quorum likelihoods and volunteers, who's gonna do this work? We settled on the three, three, two, and two model, originally Harwich was down to one, and then they made a little bit of noise about wanting two, so then we got to two and two for Dennis, and then, you know, to make it a workable solution, and make it an odd number, we settled on three.
I've looked at any number of agreements in the last couple of weeks, and specific to schools and other things, and many agreements deal with fractions. 3.2 members, 3.5 members.
You could have weighted votes, too.
Weighted votes. You know, I, I think that, that our community constantly being asked to give up our full voting rights is terrible, and I don't think we should do that.
So I, what I would suggest that we do is at some point in the near future, we get together, our group, and hammer out what it is that we'd like to present, I can go back to the DHY group and present that as a caveat for consideration, and then it'd be open to discussion, so.
I mean, the, the push on that is, okay, everybody, you know, that's the distrib, the distribution of votes is the distribution of economic interest, and if, if Yarmouth is gonna be responsible for three-sevenths, three-sevenths of the capital cost, that's fine, but, but to just say, oh, well, we're, we're gonna take Yarmouth's vote and give that to Harwich, I mean-
Yeah, understood.
I understand them not liking one vote, but hey, it's, that's how much they're putting into it.
Our subcommittee is what, Mike and?
Mike, Mr. Holcomb, Ken Moody, and Kurt.
So, and I think it would be good to sort of reconvene and then go over some of the
aspects of-
Yeah, I guess, you know, it's kind of just been thinking about that relative, because it was brought up, well-
There've been points in these discussions where we've been even more disadvantaged, all right?
Right, oh, yeah.
There's been a lot of pushback.
Yeah.
But I do think it warrants literally sitting down and going over the stuff so that you're, you're up to speed.
Yeah.
I think that cold air is working its way down this end of the table.
If, if you have some specific thoughts, though, I'll feed those to Dave Young so that he'll be prepared.
Well, I think I just voiced them, I mean, certainly, you know, he can, he can watch this, the tape.
Probably is.
But, it's at 10:03.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Was it favor?
We're done, Dan?
I'm done.
What's that?
There you go. 10 o'clock.
Say aye.
Turn into a pumpkin.
Aye, opposed, all right.